All set?
All set.
Great, okay. So it's 6 o'clock, so I'll call the meeting to order. There is a quorum present, so we can start with the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Have the members received the minutes of last month's meeting?
Yes.
Yes. Are there any changes?
No, no.
I'm gonna have to stay some seconds. Can I have a motion to adopt the minutes?
So moved.
Eric?
Second.
Second. Thank you, Emily. Ball in favor?
Aye.
Great. We're gonna start by amending the agenda. I think we are going to move the pre-application for Hitchcock to the first item on the agenda, since I think that's why most people are here tonight. I just wanted to explain what a pre-application is. We have this procedure where if somebody is potentially looking at a property or looking at doing something to their property, they can submit this small application to us. It allows them to come in and ask some basic questions about the process, about, you know, what they would do if they were filing an application. They can come and tell us what their proposal might be, but it doesn't mean there is any application before us. There's nothing for us to approve or disapprove. All we are here tonight on, we have two pre-applications before us, is to just answer some questions from the applicant.
Use the mic.
Let's go through the mic. And this is not a public hearing, and when we don't have public hearings, that means we don't take public comment. We can't have people calling out questions or anything. We're going to have the applicant's representative come up. They will explain their thought process, their proposal to us, and ask their questions, and that's kind of the extent of what we're gonna be able to do tonight. That doesn't mean that you can't let your voices be heard if you have opinions, excuse me, about what gets said here tonight, or what the potential proposal might be. You can certainly write letters to the planning board. You can tell us what you're thinking about, any of these things. So that's what I would suggest if you feel a bit frustrated that you can't be heard. Okay, with that being said, Joe?
I think actually it's nice to see everybody again, but my name is Joe Ariel with Abrams Fensterman. We represent the applicant, this pre-application process, and I actually think we're just gonna turn it over immediately for that conversation that you were describing. Let them tell you what they're thinking and ask them questions, and you can ask them questions.
Turn it over to whom?
Us.
Oh.
Yeah. Our, right.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were here to speak to.
No, I'm here on behalf, but they're actually here, and they, the principals thought it was important to.
That's great.
Face immediately and know what they're thinking.
Okay, so if you can come forward, there's a microphone here, so that's why I would ask.
Second seat there.
Where I can pull it up.
Maybe, yeah, drag yours. So can you tell me your name?
David Blatt. And this is Henry Hay.
David, can you spell your last name?
B.L.A.T.T.
B.N.A. double T.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, why don't you step up to the mic and say?
Yeah, 'cause we're not hearing it. I'm sorry, what was your name?
Henry Hay. H.A.Y.
H.A.Y. Okay, great.
If I could just add, to use the microphone, because there's about 15 people in the hallway.
The microphone does not, the microphones are for the audio that we take that goes onto YouTube tomorrow. There's no speaker out there.
Oh, I thought I was hearing you better when you.
Now, sorry about that. We will try to be a bit louder, but the room has its limitations, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Well, it's nice to meet you all. Thank you very much for accommodating us today. We appreciate the opportunity to have a moment to introduce ourselves, share some thoughts on the project that we're considering. You know, judging by the size of the crowd, I anticipate there's some, as you alluded to eggs, anticipation over what will happen at the property, and we hope that we can engage in open dialogue with the planning board, the community overall, to have a dialogue open, hear people's thoughts, share some of our ideas, and hear how that resonates, and hear some of the history and concerns that the town may have with the property, and hopefully we can put some concerns to rest, address some concerns. But, you know, it goes without saying that this is an incredible piece of property, incredibly large piece of property, deserves a responsible and thoughtful steward, and our hope is that we can bring that level of stewardship that the property deserves and level of attention to detail and care that a property like this needs. I don't know how many people have been to the property, or what everyone knows about it, but it's been dormant for many, many years, and, you know, it needs someone to nurture and help bring it back to life. So, you know, we, our goal here was just to hear some perspectives, concerns, advice, thoughts, listen as much as we're speaking. With that, I'll just share a little bit about our thoughts or vision for the property. So our ideas on our project are to create a world-class golf course, clubhouse, limited membership. We anticipate a project that would include boutique wellness and spa component, have some limited residential component, equestrian facilities and grounds. We imagine restoring and restocking the ponds to help support local wildlife, setting aside portions of the property to maintain open space and create some conservation easements across the property. We'd like to integrate some hiking and biking trails throughout. From a residential perspective, which we'd like to discuss in more detail, you know, some thoughtfully, carefully planned residential laws, discussing some potential to cluster. There's different zones that exist on the property, as I'm sure you know. Maybe additional follow-up, we might be able to have a working session with a planner. I don't know how it works here, if there's folks that we can talk to and speak to with our team about areas of the project that are most suitable for development, but, you know, and then on the property, you know, there's, there's, our his, we have a history in adaptive reuse of historic buildings in the city, and, you know, there's some amazing structures on the property that could be restored, such as the barns, and I don't know if you've seen images of the greenhouses that existed on the property back in the day, but we imagine recreating, restoring what is left of them, which is not much. But, you know, across the site, guiding principle of quality, lower density, focus on open space, preserving sensitive view sheds and corridors, and, yeah, that's kind of the high level overview of what we have in mind. I can, I could keep going a little bit, or we can kind of open it up. Keep going a bit, okay. Okay, so, yeah, so I mean, as far as guiding principles, which I kind of touched on a little bit, I think, you know, our approach is really rooted in sensitivity to the history here, the rural landscape, agricultural history, and the sense of community that exists here. As I mentioned before, I think from an open space and clustering perspective, we would aim to preserve and protect as much of the property via conservation easement as possible, development clustered in discreet areas, screening homes, again, as I mentioned, the view sheds and corridors, tucking homes in woods and on the edges of pastures. From a community heritage perspective, from conversations we have, we understand that the Millbrook, we haven't had a conversation with them yet, but we understand that the Millbrook Hunt comes through the property, and this property borders some existing conservation easement properties, so we would hope to preserve that use and work with them to try to seamlessly continue that tradition. On the architecture and design side, I think, you know, TBD, I think we're all very early in the process, but we envision it kind of being from a more traditional aesthetic and traditional design, not so much modern intrusions and modern aesthetics. And, let's see, I think that's, yeah, 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 the, yeah, and we're very excited about the former greenhouses and bringing the gardens and.
No, and the landscape.
And the landscape.
We have landscaped, it's from England, British gardens, that kind of thing. We have the best in.
There was a former garden there.
Yes, so we would love to bring that.
It's dying.
Do you envision that sort of thing being open to the public, or is this just for the membership? Is it, how are you envisioning that?
We're gonna have a very, very small membership, maybe 300 people.
So are you envisioning this more like a private club that people would join, or is this more like a place like Silo Ridge, where you would own a home, and then you would have these amenities that are surrounding you?
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a golf course with membership that.
It's nothing like Silo Ridge. This is Buckingham Palace or the clapouts. It's completely different. It's a much higher quality.
Let me ask you, I'm sorry. Just a broader question.
Yes, sure.
Are you, have you looked at, are you familiar with the master plan for the town of Washington?
The 2015 comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Yes.
So it states pretty clearly the.
It's not 2015.
It's about 10 years ago.
Is it 10 years?
2015.
There were some updates.
There was a hospitality update, but it didn't update. There was some drafts, but it didn't look like something didn't get passed all the way. I looked at the drafts, but they all had draft versions.
My question is.
Hospitality was, right, agreed, yes.
It's part of our.
Part of the law, but it doesn't affect that property.
Yes, understood.
The plan represents the views and desires of the community, developed in the village to maintain the rural nature of the town. How do you see your thoughts?
Absolutely.
We feel fully aligned, I mean, reading that, I feel.
This is what we want.
This is what we want, yes.
So in that regard, how many residential units are you planning?
We don't have a plan at the moment. I think that's, we look at the underlying zoning and have a reduction from the underlying zoning.
But you would have a business plan.
We have a business plan, yes. I mean, until we, until we know what's possible and what's supportable and what's, you know, yeah, we have a business plan to the extent that we've started. It's chicken and the egg, you know.
If you had residential units.
What's that?
You would consider cluster zoning.
If we had, how many? What's that?
If you had residential units.
Can you speak up, 'cause I'm sure everyone can't hear.
You would consider cluster zoning if residential units, or would you consider lots, like large lots?
I think that's also, that's part of, I think both. I think we would consider, that's a dialogue we'd like to have. I think we envision having a little bit of both, a little bit of clustering, maybe some large lots, but again, a focus on preservation of the property and protecting large tracts to the maximum extent. Pause. When you read the comprehensive plan, it's not totally clear what if rural means do a bunch of 10-acre lots, and is that what you like? Because it's rural, and you tuck them in, everyone has their space, or do you like to, you know, what do you, you know?
So recently, we had a development project come through here.
Yeah.
And the developer was good enough to analyze what the existing neighborhood would look like, cluster zoned, with cluster zoning, or with lots. And it was very informative to us, because we realized that the lots, right, was more in keeping with the community than what cluster zoning would do. Now, on a big piece of property like that, that may not be true. Cluster zoning may work out better, because you can keep all the residences in a small.
And that's what New York State, that's what the New York State guidance says, is cluster zoning.
What's that, they say, say that again?
We have to pull it up, but when we've had these larger pieces of property, we've had to look at, and I think actually give a waiver to not follow, if we.
You have to have looked at it and made a vote on it.
To vote, a vote to go in a different direction from cluster zoning, which is what New York's, the New York State.
To not cluster.
To not cluster. That's what they are, their guidance is.
But one thing.
Those people made a good argument for not clustering.
For not clustering.
All right, let's not get into that. I think, what I'm hearing though is, you don't, you have ideas, lots of, sounds like some very good ideas, some interesting ideas, but you don't have a plan, and you would like to have some sort of back and forth with us to create a plan. And that is not something that we have done before, so that is something that we would have to talk about and look at with our attorneys and with our consultants, whether that's something we can even do.
Okay.
Without, the way that we generally work, which your attorney knows pretty well, is that we have an application.
Yep.
The people come in, they have a plan, they've thought it through, this is what they want to do, and while we then can work from that point on, we can tweak, we can talk about what doesn't work for, you know, what we wouldn't approve because of X, Y, and Z problems. The idea that we're all gonna sit around and do this, I don't know how that gets done under our, the way that we work.
Yeah.
So that's, that's, so I'm feeling that you're coming in with that as a concept, and I'm just not sure that we can accommodate that.
I mean, we're happy to, yeah, we think generally having a dialogue, especially when it's such a significant piece of the town, a piece of, from a history and general size perspective, you know, it's, you probably don't have a lot of 2,100 acre.
We do not.
Properties that come before you to.
I think it's the biggest property that just came.
Can I, can I ask, what is your experience in rural areas? Obviously, you have a lot of development experience in the city, but I saw no rural projects on your website.
Yeah, so I, it's not on our website, but I worked for six years on a 10,000 acre project in rural Utah called Powder Mountain. We had 2,800 units of entitlements. We set aside large portions of land and conservation. We ultimately developed a plan to develop about 500 units out of the 2,800, limit home sizes to, very significant things there. Worked with the, we've got infrastructure bonds, tax increment financing, conservation easements, you know, lots of components, so, you know, spent many years.
So if we look at Powder Mountain, we've been able to see maybe some previous work that you've done?
Yeah, we can, I can share that. I have a project at Martha's Vineyard and 55 acres in Edgertown that we worked with the Martha's Vineyard Commission, Edgertown Planning Board, you know, over five, six years to develop a plan, you know, that's significant. It's 55 acres, but it's the largest development that's been done in Martha's Vineyard since 1980s, you know, I'm just very familiar with doing projects that have large impacts on whatever space they're, you know, they're in, so, yeah.
I appreciate the comments about understanding the importance of this property to the entire community, and I would bet almost every person in this room has spent some time on that property. I mean, I think almost everyone probably has walked the property, who it's a big part of our community, and that's why you're seeing even today so much interest. Some concerns that I would have is some with the wetlands. There are a number of wetlands on that property. There are a lot of waters that flow through there. Two main sources for the water in Millbrook, one of them is Shaw Creek, which runs through there. It's a watershed area, it's just a lot of important wetlands on there, and how you would, how your, what was your plan to make that work with the construction involved to protect the wetlands? And then the other part is, how do you protect that ruralness, that feel, the specialness of that land by putting an 18-hole golf course on it? That, to me, immediately destroys the.
That's part of our concern as well.
Yeah, it's a major concern, is the golf course. The golf course component is gonna be your biggest hurdle.
Yeah, I mean, these are uses that are allowed via, yeah, I mean, they're special permit uses that are, golf course and membership club is something that's outlined under your existing zoning code as an allowed use under a special permit process. But yes, we are, you know, that's something, something that we're sensitive to. If you look at, you know, what a traditional golf course is in terms of acreage out of, you know, the 2,100, you know, you're talking 200 to 300 acres of a golf course, which includes, you know, three days, it's not, it's not clear-cutting everything, it's, you know, it's integrating into the landscape, and we think that, you know, choosing an architect that respects the nature and existing topography and features of the property would be a very important component.
So at least about 400 of the acres would be dedicated to golf course.
I said 200 to 300, is about.
It's a typical size of a golf course.
Yeah, it's 175, is the smallest.
Would the golf course be your main marketing attraction?
Yeah, golf course would be the main component of the.
So without the golf course.
There's really nothing to.
It's not a good project, right?
Correct, yes.
What percentage of the parcel are you planning to leave undeveloped?
I think that's kind of the next, we would look, we would aim to put as much as we can, I mean, at a very, very minimum, I think we would love to put, even if someone has it, if, you know, talking on the R, is it RR10 or RA10? I forgot that, RR10. RR10 zoning, you know, if you did a 10-acre lot, we would look to put that footprint as, like, have very small development envelopes on that 10-acre site. So if you had a 10-acre site, your actual footprint of development would be very, very small, and we would look to protect the majority of that acreage.
So if you have 2,100 acres, you could have 210 homes.
I'm asking a different ques, I'm asking kind of generally if you thought about what percentage of the whole parcel you're planning to leave untouched?
Not really, we have to lay it out, you know, we have to really look at. I mean, if you go back in the satellite imagery of what was, I don't know what untouched is from, like, if you're looking untouched from the use of the property as it was originally used in the 1940s and 50s and 30s, and you go back and you look at satellite imagery and you see how much of the property was cut, and was fields and used for agricultural purposes? Is that what you're talking from that perspective?
I guess what I mean is, you obviously have some kind of a plan, right? And so when I asked the question, you gave me the answer about kind of house lots. And I'm talking about not having part, you know, not dividing it into parcels for small homes, but, you know, how much are you planning to leave open space?
Yeah.
Put into conservation, as you were saying.
Right, as much as possible. I don't, I don't.
I might have pulled you too, and I just, an idea, an estimate, anything?
At least 50%.
Well, I think 25 to 50%, I think is kind of a good estimate. We have not looked at it.
You know, you don't have a plan. Just to give a general idea of this.
Yes, as much as possible, we would love to put aside as much as possible.
But are you business partners in this, or?
Yes, I work with Henry, yes, yeah.
It's your company, and you're a consultant for him?
No, I, an employee of his.
Boy, a boy.
This is my voice.
Okay, so I, I come back to, what do we do from here?
Yeah.
We have no plan, we have nothing that we can act on.
Well.
Do you have specific process questions for us?
I guess, yeah.
Because that's kind of what.
Sure, we can go to that. Yeah, I think, you know, one major process question is, you know, you have different zones that exist, you know, some of the properties in the Millbrook Village, the property that's within the town of Washington has three different zones. What is the, what would the process be to, to your point of setting aside, you know, contiguous acreage of moving density across zones, and if we had, if we wanted to do in the, is it the RM2? What's the two, the RM2 or something to, RM2? RM2, if we wanted to take RR10 density and do it on the RM2, is there a process, and set aside via conservation?
That would be a zoning, that would be a ZBA issue. We don't deal with anything that.
You'd have to get a variance.
That would be a variance.
Those are variances, and that would be a, you know, if you're gonna be subdividing it into lots, you'd be talking about a lot of, that's a big variance, too.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That's a big change.
Yeah, I guess, is that some, so that's a ZBA support kind of, I guess, is that something generally that people are supportive of, of saying, we need this, where you rather have sprawling development across, across parcels, because that's where the density is, or to move it and set aside pieces that are not, you know?
Make it uniform.
We can't answer, you know, can't answer that anymore.
Okay, well, what is, so the process for that is to?
I think it, I think it depends on your proposal. So if you propose, you'd have to give, it's very hard to answer in the abstract. So if you had a subdivision that, you know, fell into the, all the appropriate zoning parcels, and you have no issue, but if it's something that requires a variance, if you create a subdivision that requires a variance, you'll need zoning and looking to.
Right, yeah, if you had a viable project that you could do without getting a variance that had density there, density there, density there, but didn't set aside any conservation, is it?
You see, it's beneficial.
Like, if there's like complying within the zoning, and there's like doing something.
And for the traffic.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
I think part of the issue is that we don't have, we have not done that before.
Right.
This is a unique property, and I would love to say we could set aside a whole separate system of how we handle this, but I don't think we are really allowed to do that. So I would need to, we would need to, I think, have you guys come up with the best plan that you can, you think works on the property for you, and in accordance with looking at the master plan, the comprehensive plan, looking at our zoning, all of that, and then if you need variances to make that work, you want to have land, you know, to ask the town board to set aside some of that as a land conservation area. Those are the things, those are the steps, I think, that come after coming up with a plan first. Does everybody agree with that?
You know, what you could do, instead of like getting surveys done and all of that, that would cost a lot of development money, instead of doing all that, why not just come forward with a bubble plan, saying, this is where we'd like to do this, is what we'd like to do this, is what this involves, so that we can look at something concrete and say, well, I think you'll have, you need a special permit for this, you need a special permit for that, and, or you, we think this is cluster zoning, or we give you our input on something, but it's, in the abstract, it's very difficult.
But I think we need more than that to give our input on something. We don't really operate.
But I mean, we can do it in phases. We could do it, they could come and suggest something, get our input, and then come back and do it again.
I think you still need like a concrete plan.
It does need a plan. We don't really have a way of working on that.
Wetlands, wetlands in certain parts of the area, and I think it's just, it's a big project to tackle in the abstract, and I don't think it's the highest and best use of anybody's time, right, to kind of talk about it in the abstract. I mean, I'm assuming you have some kind of a plan.
Well, yeah, I mean, the uses of residential, of golf, of some equestrian component, of having a spa and wellness and having, you know.
Fishing.
Fishing, and a couple of, you know, 20 to 30 cottages that could be done on a short-term transient basis, very small, limited number of, you know, tran, of cottages.
In short-term, right.
Like a short, no, not really. For members, yes.
For members.
Yes.
Yeah. I just keep coming back to, we cannot really advise you without some starter plan, but that's just, we don't operate that.
One suggestion, I think what would be helpful, if you think it's appropriate, even if we could have access, and obviously the client would, we don't want to be a drain on the town's resources for this, in particular to the, to your consultants, I think what they want to avoid is coming up with that kind of more concrete plan that you're talking about, and being 180 degrees off of where, on, you know, the first look, your consultants, based on what they know about you, what they know about the property, are gonna say, this, you know, this is a no. Like, if we could just get some access for a couple of conversations.
I mean, we, we do have the ability to set an escrow and to have people then meet with our, you know, talk to our consultants using that, but usually that's done in connection with an application, so that's, I'd have to think through.
Well, I understand that, but I do think it's fair to, as everybody has noted here, it's an extraordinarily unique piece of property. Everybody's gonna have an idea about how best to develop it. I think it merits potentially maybe a slightly different, and frankly, you know, the applicant, I think, is trying to kind of gauge community interest and pay attention to.
I sense that, and I appreciate that.
And it's hard to do that, and we don't mean to come to the board and chat about the project, you know, just have to throw out ideas to us.
Yes.
But there would be some kind of grounding conversations that their people could talk to your people and say, are we right about this? Are we reading this right? You know, those kinds of things, so that their plan makes sense before they come down.
Okay, Hannah, let's hear from Hannah on this topic.
So I think that's a genuine concern and consideration, especially for a plot, that this is this large, but I think that there are procedures that need to be followed, and one of those is that there's some kind of, you're not gonna be 180 degrees off of, you know, what the board is expecting if you follow the provisions of the code. There's a code, so that you can be working within the framework of what's expected in these different zones, and as we said, if there's something that goes outside of those frameworks, that's where you seek a variance, but you try as hard as you can to follow what the code says, as the town has built it and made it. So I think that you won't be 180 degrees off, and I think the board would prefer to see something substantive, and that means something close to a complete application, and I will say, someone mentioned this to me earlier, I believe the town has done workshops before, so that, that could be an opportunity. I'm not sure how workshops have worked in this town in the past, but I think that there, that could be an opportunity for you to have some kind of preliminary feedback, but still, even then, you come with a plan that conforms with the code.
That is definitely.
And the workshops are public. We don't have conversations in closed rooms about this kind of stuff. This is a community that wants transparency, and these workshops are public.
We'd be happy to.
And they're recorded, and they're placed on our website, so that everyone in the community knows what's going on.
That's great. That's great.
Yeah, so I think we all come back to the point of we need a starting point. And while I, we appreciate the fact that you would like to work with the community and all, the best way I, I think we can advise you to do that is by looking at our zoning, looking at the comprehensive plan, looking at what's happened with some other developments recently and the, the community feedback on those kinds of things and just trying to come up with the best thing you can. And then we will work with you, like I said, at a workshop first and maybe multiple workshops to help get it to be something that, that might be able to work with.
I think that was a really good point that you made, that don't expect that we're going to throw out the code or change your zoning or do a bunch of things. We've just had the whole community look at all of this again, and I think we feel that we've got a good pulse of what the community wants. It's in writing. It was a high participation rate in this and I would just say, if you follow what's in place, I think you won't be 180 degrees off, but please don't go into this expecting that we're going to give a bunch of variances and, and change our code to, to meet a project.
That's why I asked about that. I really refer you back to it and appreciate that you read it. The sentiment of the community.
Yep.
And we also, I feel like we can't, we can't partner in this development. We can't be responsible.
Hiring, like hiring a seasoned planner, as well as like an engineer, who could provide that insight into the code and that, and that you're able to present some sort of plan.
Yep.
And some sort of analysis based on like the code's procedural requirements, the NRI map, the environmental map, even some preliminary secret issues.
Yep.
And that can provide a starting point for the, for the board to say, all right, we're grounded here, these are the things that, that we see are clearly permitted, these are the things that are a little more nuanced, and these are the things we have to send you to the ZBA or the town board for.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we've reviewed NRI maps, we've, we've reviewed the code, we think, you know, what we, the, the components of the project that we have fits within the provisions of the code. And the biggest question was kind of the question I asked, which is, you know, the, the trade of, of moving some density to, to put, to set aside large pieces of property. That's kind of the biggest question, but for sure, we can easily lay out a project that fits within the code.
And then again, we can work with you on that. Then we can, we will, we'll discuss it and.
Work on your plan.
Right.
Not a plan that we develop. We have no ownership of the development of the plan.
Understood.
So there's one other thing I'd like you to reference, which is the NRI, the?
The NRI maps, yeah, I've looked at them.
There's 19 maps and they're important because of wildlife and wetlands and all the environmental aspects of that, that plan. That's just been published and it's important to us. I'd like to ask another question is, how does the town, the community benefit from this development? What's the primary thing that we all care about, you know, rural life? How do we benefit from it?
Yeah.
We know how you benefit from it, but we don't know how we benefit from it.
I think that's, that's something that we wanted some feedback on. I think there's, you know, many ways, you know, I think conservation easement and setting aside some, putting sensitive, putting some of those pastures or sensitive view corridors, maybe doing something at the ponds or the lakes or something. I think, the hunt, yeah, I think, you know, there's.
Bringing in whatever.
One of the first questions was whether you see this as a sort of a voc gated community. You also mentioned Silo Ridge.
This is nothing like Silo Ridge.
I understand, but I'd be interested in hearing how it's not, because a lot of the issues that were raised weren't, weren't just necessarily what happened on the ground, what happened between that community and the broader communities, as a median was saying. I think you can be guided by some of what happened there, which is where I think a lot of us would not want to have happen here.
We don't want that.
The project on its face sounds very similar to Silo Ridge. There's going to be residential, there's going to be an 18-hole golf course, there are going to be a club and spa, there's going to be equestrian. It sounds very much, it may look different, but the project details sound very similar.
I think this will fit into what the community wants more, because we want to conserve much more land, we want to bring in hunting, fishing, everything else.
Take the features that are on the property, the historic features, the green.
I imagine you have looked at and read the news around things that are still going on at Silo Ridge, what some of the friction is between that community and a median was saying.
We don't want that.
Okay, but when you say you don't want that, I just asked if you'd give it some thought when you come back, so we can be specific on what that is. People of the media feel excluded from, they have no access to what was more open land. So it's fine that the land is open, but if it doesn't, this is, I think, what Richard was asking in terms of the benefits to the community. That's really a bad situation down there, even for the people that invested in Silo Ridge. So it's very important, and I appreciate your coming here and wanting to have this conversation, but it's very important that we are able to really respect the wishes of the community.
Richard, do you have thoughts on what the community needs or what might be important to them?
Well, it's important to build it into the, build facilities into the structure of the community, so that people feel that that's part of their community and not something separate, you know, some gated end thing that's exclusively for the use of some people. Maybe you should have some public access to some of the facilities, you know, so people can still enjoy it.
And I would add to that, Silo Ridge represents 60% of the tax base for those towns there now. But that's after they filed, they sued individuals, 72 landowners, individuals sued that town, had their, their property reassessed, almost bankrupt. So if, without this kind of dialogue, which we really do appreciate, it's not, it's not fun for anybody. That's, that's what you would want to avoid as well.
So one of the benefits for the town is.
I think we need, we need to move on. We have a big agenda tonight.
I just want to say one other thing. When you're working on the plan and as, as you work on it and you come back to us, one thing that people are going to want to know a lot about is the golf course. All the studies related to increased risks of cancer around golf courses, chemicals over our water supply, all the water that goes through there that feeds into Shaw Creek, which is one of the two primary sources of our drinking water, and how an 18-hole golf course sitting over that and feeding into our drinking water and where all these watersheds are, people are going to have massive questions about that. So I think you should spend a significant amount of energy on addressing that.
Waste water as well. Understood.
Okay, as our drinking water.
Yeah, understood. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's a lot more, there's a lot more still to see here.
Don't leave us now.
It's so.
That's so.
a full agenda beyond the last item. Thank you.
I think that's for the ones, you got me. Yes, yes. A long shady ladder is not going to be able to stay for the public hearing. Have a good night.
I do, absolutely, 100%.
Really?
Yep, absolutely.
That was a great, that was a really, really good question.
I mean, I just don't understand how that's going to make it work.
Call it deposit.
So that water flows into, and goes under Bangor Road and feeds into Shaw Creek, one of the two primary sources of water, Shaw Creek, that's what gets behind my house. But all that water is collected on the Hitchcock property, flows across Bangor Creek, one of two primary water sources, and now you're going to put all the chemicals on top of it, it's just too much, and you get the lead out that flow to our drinking water.
Can't do it.
There's so many studies about golf courses, how it's used, and cancer, three times incidents increase. I wonder if the potashina comes from here is near. I think we turned the air on, but I think it's much more than that.
I will tell you, it's a good thing we did what we did with our trailer.
With our trailer?
We stuck our guns, really made the point.
I mean, they're going to have. But I don't, I don't think I'm.
But you know what? But we have, I know, but we can, we can withstand that. These boards have, these boards have. See, I asked them, the golf courses, the marketing tour.
Susan, we opened some windows, I think it'll cool off.
It was obvious to me that that's a draw.
All right.
You built 50, 10 mean numbers. 50, 10 mean numbers.
Should we close that door?
Yes.
Okay.
Faces and positions, totally faces. Yeah, everything else, I didn't, I don't work it out, figure it out.
There's no way they can settle it without the town.
Oh, that's powerful.
Okay, we have, next on the agenda, we have a fresh issue, Route 82. We have a public hearing on for tonight. This is an application for a special use permit to operate this property as an inn. Alicia, you want to update us a little on this before we open the public hearing?
Yes, sorry.
Take your time.
I know you weren't. All my notes are all, all on Hitchcock.
Did you put a written, your written comment, did you see that?
I did. I got, I have two comments.
Who's Eric? Lost Eric? There he is.
We lost you!
She want me to open it?
It seems that.
That's an angry llama.
So the comments and issues that we raised have been addressed. And that provided that the hearing can be open and closed, that the board can consider granting a special permit.
One thing that came up was that the block size was wrong in the application. We believe that, we believe that was wrong. It said 1.53, but it's actually 1.67.
I think I saw an open error on that, that there was something different.
We need to adjust, we need to amend that.
But it was on their, the plans that they submitted, we saw that. Did you actually speak to that?
Yes, there was a discrepancy between parcel access and the survey that we had conducted. So I noted that on the application, but you have a survey that accurately describes.
Okay. So the survey says 1.67?
I believe so, yes. I have, I can double check.
Well, oh. I did not double check that today. I was looking on parcel access and.
Parcel access says 1.67 and.
Yeah.
The application says 1.53.
1.52.
1.52.
That's the survey?
That's the survey.
1.528.
Okay. So what do we do with that?
That's what we have in our draft resolution.
But if, if the town and the county says it's something else, we just go by the survey?
I mean, the parcel access isn't official. Like it's informational. So if we have a certified survey saying, what the average is that can be relied on and it doesn't match up exactly.
Okay, great. Okay, so, so there really isn't anything else that we need to know before I open the public hearing?
Unless you want to speak to the sign issue, would be about the Dr. Jonathan?
Oh, yes, the, we were concerned about the sign and whether it complied with the town ordinance, but, and it was a little larger, but it was, it had a number of factors that allowed him to expand what the size could be, which included it being wooden and landscaping. Landscaping, maybe not being garish or something.
Yeah, it would have to be in colors and design approved by the building inspector, a certain amount of landscaping and wood, I think those were the common ones.
And so with that, he said that the town, that the sign that is there complies. So we were able to remove that condition.
The sign that's there now, though, that's been there for a long time.
No.
No, they go.
It was a custom-made sign and it was made in solid wood. I tried to keep to the aesthetic of the property and the feel of the old, but the new.
I drove by there today and I thought it'd been there for a long time. It looked.
I like what they said.
It had been there for a long time. That's how it looked. So it looked, it looked good.
Okay, so can I open the public hearing or do anything else? Discuss.
Oh, I was, I was, was there a question?
Discussing something?
We were just confirming that our notes were on.
Okay, all right, so can I get a motion to open the public hearing? So, second, Adam, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Before I ask the community, they have, could come up and was here to speak on this, I just wanted to read into the record two letters we received from the community. The first was, dear members of, this is from Ilana Nelson. Dear members of the Washington Planning Board, please forgive this late email. We were hoping to speak but unable to stay to hear the project come before you tonight. We own a parcel close enough to this proposal that we received a notice. We remember a cat in your lap and the blue barn. We feel this proposed BMB is in line with the neighborhood and does not pose any detriment to the neighbors. I would like to request dark skies initiatives are implemented. This is exactly the type of hospitality that we welcome to the sole section of the town. Thank you, Ilana Nelson. Dear Town of Washington Planning Board members, this correspondence is regarding the public hearing on October 7, 2025, at the Town of Washington, 10 Reservoir Drive, Milbrook, New York, to hear any comments regarding the application for property owners, Beth Harris and Jason Pergozin. Ordinarily, I would not have any concerns regarding the requested use of parcel 331665 as it was previously used as an inn. My concern is how the property owners will manage any increase in noise, including but not limited to large party gatherings and pets of prospective in lodgers. Since the current owners have moved into parcel 331665, there has been a noticeable presence of one to three dogs that are permitted to roam the property, barking sometimes for hours at a time with no response from owners. These dogs are quite large and intimidating and their relentless barking can cause disturbance at any given hour of the day or week. It's puzzling how the owners of these dogs let them bark so much, especially since they knew they would be requesting a special permit from the town to operate as an inn. Even though my property is several hundred feet away, I find the barking disturbing and imagine it must be even more disturbing to adjacent neighbors. I think the dogs had enough time to adjust to their new environment, yet their barking persists. Based on my observation of how the current property owners manage the noise of their barking dogs on their property, I'm concerned how the owners will manage noise coming from guests of their property. I trust and appreciate the office of the Town of Washington Planning Board and appreciate the opportunity to share my concerns regarding this special use permit request. Respectfully, Jay Welling. Is there anybody else that would, that's here to speak on this?
Can I speak from here?
We would prefer you come up because they won't be able to hear you on the, on the recording.
This is true. Sorry.
State your name.
Dr. George, so I'm speaking on behalf of myself as owner of the properties that have the greatest popularity. I own 61 Old Route 82, which is directly across the street. I own 54 Old Route 82, no, 55 Old Route 82, which is directly across the street, and I own 54 Route 343, which is directly behind the property. The area south of the monument has historically been mixed use, and even though the pre-existing non-conforming use of the inn has lapsed because of the residential ownership, I would urge the board to support their application for a special use permit for inn. I mean, it's desperately needed. The property is in spectacular shape. I would say contingent upon a board health, based, based upon this conversion of residential to inn and the number of rooms that are being potentially recommended. I think it's a, it's a great use and, you know, as far as the dogs are concerned, the dog problem is my fault. I've had work done across the street and the dogs are barking at my workmen. So, you know, I understand that the individual that's complaining about the dogs barking is a reality, but I think that's something as a veterinarian, that I think you can manage the behavior of your dogs. And I would strongly recommend that you guys support this special permit and welcome to the neighborhood.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak on this? Okay. Oh, yes, sorry, I missed you.
Kathy Shanks, I live at 40 Old Route 82 and welcome to the neighborhood and I hope they support you. I think it's great. And I met your dog together with a dog.
May I make a comment about the dogs?
Yes.
Sure. You can address any of the public comments.
So I'm Jason Pergozin, colloquially named Dr. J, one of the new owners of the property. And the culprit, as it were, of. The doctor actually wanted her to be put down recently. I've kept her going and healthy. She's really the main culprit of that. The other dogs without her lead will be much less so disturbing. And I also train dogs on the side, and I will continue to work with them to decrease that so that we're not disturbing the community.
And my construction is almost done. And that's the instigation for the barking.
Aside, aside from the mailman, aside from the mailman, that is, that is a big issue.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, so can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I was not at the last meeting. I read, you know, read through things, but it's a special permit is what they're requesting. And this is for a bed and breakfast. And does that require the innkeeper to live on the premise?
Yes.
Okay. And does that allow for special events to occur there, like weddings?
Nope. It expressly prohibits that, I don't think.
That's what I thought. Okay. I guess that's a debate.
Yeah. Because the letter writer was, seems concerned about parties or large gatherings.
But I think that's prohibited. It's not even an issue. Because you won't be hosting.
We're not planning those.
Yeah. And you're living on the property.
Yeah.
And will continue to.
Okay. Okay. So do we think we're ready to vote on this? Hannah, do you have anything else to say before?
Yeah, well, I would say what has already been said about the dogs, I think is probably sufficient. And I will say of the condition, or of the factors, rather, that need to be considered for a special permit, one is that operations in connection with a special use will not be more objectionable to nearby properties by reason of noise, fumes, other things. But I would say having dogs is not in connection with the special use of a bed and breakfast. And so I think that doesn't pertain here. And if there is an issue with the dogs, then we have a section of the code that there could be a report made by your neighbor, but I don't believe any violation has been noticed.
Given that the first letter specifically mentions light, is there anything indicating restriction on light?
Yes, part of the same factor, operations in connection with special use will not be more objectionable to nearby properties by reason of noise, fumes, noxious vibration, glare, or flashing lights than would be the operation of any permitted use. But I don't think that you have anything other than residential lighting.
You've not added any light since we requested the property, just because it came up.
If you did add any lighting, which you might find as you bring guests on, that maybe you do need additional lighting, there is a very specific dark sky guidance for light so that the light does not shine upward, that all the light shines down and lights the property without creating light that's distracting for the neighbors and maybe is like light pollution.
I just said to Jason this morning that there's so much light there already, that the light actually might be reduced.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so, anything else?
Well, the only things I would say is that there are three conditions that I have listed in this draft resolution for the board's consideration. One of them is Department of Health approval. One of them is the applicants must register with the Dutchess County Department of Finance for a certificate of authority. I didn't see that in your application package.
Okay.
It just needs to be within three days of commencing operation.
Okay.
So I have that in here as well. And then fees, escrow, and then what, something that was just mentioned is we could add, if you wanted, a condition as to limiting events. Just to clarify that fact, if you'd like, we can do revisions from the D I S or for dark sky compliant lighting, if any is added. The board can decide on those.
I feel like the code addresses the party issue. I don't really feel like we need to be, then we're leaving out other things that the code says and picking and choosing, so I don't really, I wouldn't.
I think the code addresses events specifically.
I don't see that. It would be trying to find it.
I think it's in the, I think it's...
It was shown to us at the last meeting.
We talked about it at the last meeting. I think a bed and breakfast is not for events. I think it's in the...
That might be the definition.
I think it is in the definition.
It must be the definition.
But we definitely...
I saw it in writing.
Yes, specifically said, no, no large events, no conventions, no weddings.
I think it's in the definition.
I think it was under the section of defining different, you know, bed and breakfast and then air being...
Did I make it up?
The applicant's Department of Health, the Dutchess County...
That is the Department of Finance for a certificate of authority. It's Dutchess County Charter, Chapter 264.7, and that's...
264.7?
That's it. Just for the occupancy tax.
... Finance.
So to confirm, definitional limitations of a bed and breakfast do say that cannot be used commercially for conference centers, weddings, concerts, public restaurant, auctions, retreats, or others for higher events.
I think, I'm comfortable with that in our code. We don't need to be adding that as an extra condition. Okay. So, has everyone had a chance to review the draft resolution that Hannah sent around? And can I get a motion to adopt that resolution?
Motion to adopt the resolution.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And also...
Congratulations.
Wish you a lot of luck.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with it.
I wonder many questions. After we secure these approvals, what do we do? Do we do something? Do we submit them to you?
Get rooms.
I think, I think it would be a good idea to submit the certificate from the Department of Finance and the approval from the Department of Health with our secretary. So that we can add those in the file.
I assumed that, I just wanted to verify.
You just want to make sure that whatever the outstanding conditions are...
That we've met.
That you've met them and that you submit proof of needing them to the board.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Best of luck.
Good luck.
Thank you. Okay. And the next item we have is 561 and 563 per bank road.
Good evening.
Are we going to have a colored map?
It's all simple now, right? We're only doing a lot less. No new parcel.
I'll start talking when I hit the microphone. I got a couple copies of the map. I trust you got my email this morning. I don't know. This application was originally submitted as a one lot subdivision and a lot line change. Whalens feel like they need a little more time to come up with what they want to do. It's part of estate planning. So they're going to take a little time. So I'm trying to separate the two, and we're going to just concentrate on a lot line change.
One thing that that might bring up is this issue of segmentation. That's one, we were discussing that a little bit today, Hannah.
Not creating a new lot. We're merging 20 acres into an existing 20-acre lot.
But then you're coming back to subdivide.
The only thing...
That, that's...
Okay.
That's a complication.
Segmentation. Let me just run through what's being proposed for the lot line change. I know we'll come on back. So the Whalens curtain, we own a little over 54 acres of land. Adjoining them in the back is a property owned by the Coleman's that is just over 20 acres. They share a common driveway.
Is that considered a flag lot that the Coleman's have?
The Coleman's, yes.
It's a flag lot.
Yeah, and this is in the five acre zone. They share a common driveway that goes by the Whalen's house and accesses all the way back to the Coleman's house. The only thing that they're proposing to do is to take 20 acres out of the 54 acre lot and merge them together, and it's going to create a 41 acre lot for the Coleman's. There is no development. They're doing this for a...
Is this the same lot line change that was, that you had in the first proposal?
Hundred percent.
Exactly the same, but just without the subdivision.
The lines haven't moved. We will come back in to, we were proposing a 19 acre lot in a five acre zone. And I believe that the Whalen's house was going to be on 13 acres. None of that is, you know, we're not talking about that tonight, but this is exactly what was proposed before.
Okay.
The whole reason why they're buying this, A, it's beautiful. When we came back in the last time and did a lot line change, you can see that the common driveway went all the way back by the Coleman's house because there was a potential that this was going to be a building lot. Nobody wants to see that happen. So it's, makes perfect sense for the Coleman's to purchase this 20 acres and merge it into their land. They have their own buffer area, they have Rockefeller behind them. They're, it's a beautiful spot. In this, the whole thing with the stream, you'll notice that the Coleman's have, they'll have the whole stream on their property.
So the Coleman's are not considering future subdivision?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
No.
Hannah, why don't you touch on the segmentation question?
I actually have a couple things. You're going to be sorry that you emailed me so early this morning because I spent some time on this today and I found some things. So first, I'd like to talk about segmentation, just because this is something the board's talked about before, but I think that this is a prime example of where the board may find segmentation is taking place, especially because the applicant has already told us that there's another stage of this project, basically. And so I found some, some guidance on seeker. And there's a couple questions that you can ask, which would suggest that segmentation is taking place. One of those is, is there a common purpose or goal for each segment? Is there a common reason for each segment being completed at or about the same time? Is there a common geographic location involved? Do any of the activities being considered for segmentation share a common impact that may, if the activities are viewed as one project, result in a potentially significant adverse impact? Are different segments owned by the same or common ownership? And there are a couple others as well. These questions would lead the board to say, yes, there is a potential for segmentation. Now, what that means is, the board can find what's called permissible segmentation. So if you find that segmentation is happening, then that is that a lot line adjustment is taking place. Now, subdivision is taking place in the foreseeable future. They have a plan to do a subdivision and probably a driveway and potential home there at some point on that subdivided lot. That can be considered one project, but even if it's split it up, it's not going to have any less protective environmental review if we review it separately. So that can be appropriate when information on future project phases is speculative, when future phases may not occur, or when future phases are functionally independent. So those are things the board can consider, and if you find that those are satisfied, then segmentation can be deemed permissible, and the board can review separately the lot line and the subdivision. So that's the first point of order. And I would say if you want to move forward with this lot line review, you should make that finding that segmentation is permissible.
Can you talk a little bit further about functionally independent, what that means to you?
Wait. Richard, I didn't hear you. You've got this fan going.
Okay. What does functionally independent mean? I mean, that's a nice phrase, but I would like to hear what the lawyer thinks functionally independent is in this case.
I would say that whether you're looking at this project and you can say that the goal of the applicant is for this daughter or granddaughter, whatever it is, to eventually have her own lot, and so we're doing this as one project, as one action. Are these phases or parts of one action, or are they so independent that they don't affect each other or really have anything to do with each other?
Is there a specific timeframe in which these phases...
The concern here is that the applicant has already told us about this plan. If they hadn't come forward and said, we're also going to be doing subdivision and these other things, then this wouldn't even be an issue.
Okay, so I will respond to the comment you just made there. The plan that was presented here clearly states there is no development of the parcel of land having to do with the lot line change.
Right.
And the line for the lot line change is totally independent of what may happen on the other side. I don't see segmentation at all. This is simply exchanging land from here and merging it in, making a 42 acre piece of property. That's not segmentation. This will be a, a further, one lot on 19 acres is what we submitted.
I feel like they're quite independent from each other.
Absolutely.
The Coleman's are buying, are buying that 20 acres, is 20, is it 20 acres or...
Yes.
They're buying the 20 acres to prevent somebody from building on that parcel.
Hundred percent.
And to have an independent driveway that they don't have to share with anybody that might potentially buy that parcel that could be made. And so the Coleman's, independently, that's why this lot, that's a whole independent, separate thing. They don't want anybody to build over there, so they want to have this land. Whatever the, the other party does down below on their smaller, now smaller parcel is totally independent from why and what the Coleman's are doing with this lot line. It's not like the Coleman's are in, in plans with this other party to like develop this area or... They're, they solely are buying that to protect that view shed.
Hundred percent.
And to protect their, to continue to have an independent driveway by their house.
I would say, oh, please.
So indulge me because I might be able to solve the problem. Okay, so...
This is very independent.
So, when you say that the Whalens are not ready yet, right, and this was just for planning purposes?
Yep.
How, how developed is their idea of like, are they definitely going to subdivide this in the future? Is it very speculative at the moment?
No, they're, they're going to be coming back through.
Okay.
Because they're going to carve out a lot for their daughter.
Okay.
But that's completely separate from the Coleman's.
It has nothing to do with the Coleman's.
Yeah, the Coleman's, whatever, whatever the Whalens do down below on their property that's down by the road, is totally separate from why the Coleman's want this 20 acres.
It came forward as one application.
It did.
And was in one application ever.
Probably shouldn't have. But when we, when we analyze it in the future, when the Coleman, when the Whalens come back with their subdivision.
Right.
When they come back to carve out that piece, we will be doing our seeker analysis of that.
Of course.
And what we're doing here, to me, doesn't seem like it really changes that.
Yeah, totally.
It's going, we're going to, we don't need to do a seeker analysis, this will be type two, just to do a lot line.
Right.
But then when they come back to do this lot, we may be asking for where, where the house is going to be. We need a house site, we need a driveway site, we need to look at whether that complies with the wetland, you know, restrictions.
We will submit a brand new application. It'll be the same EAF that was submitted. Most of the stuff is there. It's going, the numbers are going to change. But the proposal is, again, there's, okay, we're not really talking about that, but it's, really, we're going to be creating one lot on 20 acres of land.
Yeah, but that, but the law doesn't say it's not the acreage.
I understand that. This piece of property, this piece of property is a, to put a small house, you could, you could develop the dickens out of this thing. But they're, when they're not doing that, this is a, I bring you a lot of lots and subdivisions in here, this is a home lawn. It's run-of-bank gravel. There's no trees. We're limiting the disturbance coming off of a common driveway instead of proposing one coming all the way back from the road. Very little environmental impact with this.
You know, can I, I just, Hannah, I'm actually comfortable with this, and I guess just to explain my thinking, if, if the applicant were coming here and saying, we're subdividing and we're going to build, right, and then later we might build, I might feel differently about it because then there would really be two development projects and we'd be looking at them differently. But because it's just a lot line adjustment and we don't have a plan to build something, you know, I'm not concerned because I think it's a little speculative and that does give you, I'm too tired to think of the word, but you know what I'm talking about.
Yes.
I'm not, I'm not concerned about this.
Which is totally the board's prerogative. And I would be happy to write up something in an eventual hypothetical resolution of[1672.23]
You know, can I, I just, Hannah, I'm actually comfortable with this, and I guess just to explain my thinking, if the applicant were coming here and saying, we're subdividing and we're gonna build, right? And then later we might build, I might feel differently about it because then there would really be two development projects and we'd be looking at them differently, but because it's just a lot line adjustment and we don't have a plan to build something, you know, I'm not concerned because I think it's a little speculative and that does give you, I'm too tired to think of the word, but you know what I'm talking about.
Yes.
I'm not, I'm not concerned about this.
Which is totally the board's prerogative, and I will be happy to write up something in an eventual hypothetical resolution of approval, saying that the board made these findings, that this was not segmentation, they reviewed this other potential hypothetical piece of subdivision and made a finding, and I think we should vote on this if this is the board's determination, that it will not have a lesser protective, having separate environmental reviews won't be less protective of the environment.
I think this is actually in favor of the community, because that the view is up there, that backs to the industry garden and not the Rockefeller probably, it just concentrates more contiguous land altogether. That's not gonna be parceled off and built up and developed. It protects the views.
I agree.
It creates fewer driveways.
I also think that there's no exception.
I think we all feel comfortable making that.
That you're perfectly upfront about what you're gonna do. No, and I appreciate, I mean, I split this application, this happened at like seven o'clock last night.
Okay.
And I appreciate that, and I, that the board was willing to hear me tonight in splitting this, you know, which was a dual application here. And everyone shooting from the hip, shall we say.
Okay, well, not me, because I spent.
Well, I know, because I was up early this morning and I sent you that email.
So there's only one other thing that I wanna say about this, and this is actually going against something the board has done in the past as to the public hearings. There's a specific provision that for minor subdivisions, of which a lot line adjustment is a type, that there can be certain waivers for informational and procedural requirements. And so we have in the past let that mean that a waiver of the public hearing can take place, but that specific provision actually says that those kinds of waivers can take place as long as they do not conflict with town law. So what that means is, there are instances in which a town can decide to do a one-step subdivision, meaning you go straight to the final plat for review, as opposed to a preliminary and a final plat, the two-step, which is what the town usually does for subdivisions. And so what that means is, there needs to be a public hearing at some point. So whether that is at the preliminary stage and then you waive the public hearing for the final review.
But we're not doing that, we're only doing the lot line.
Right, but even for a lot line, a lot line is a type of subdivision under the town law.
We have waived that.
You waive that many times, almost always.
Yes, I.
Where there's no development, I think it reads, where there's no, no development planned in town, planning board has the right to waive the public hearing.
That's what it says in the town code, that there is a waiver, and this is what we've done in the past for lot lines.
Yeah, I'm not following you, why you don't think we can do this.
Because in the town law, which is not the town code.
New York state law.
Yeah, I got it, okay, and what does it say?
The state law conflicts with our code. But the code doesn't set aside even explicitly procedures for a one-step review, which is what we've done in the past, just go straight to final on a lot line, or a minor subdivision. There's that whole section that says if it's minor, we can waive these provisions. So I don't think that's a problem, and we can go straight to the final review. But the provision in town law that allows for waiver of a public hearing on a final is only when there's been a preliminary plat review.
Oh.
So if you have a preliminary review and then have a public hearing on that, then that's fine and you can waive, and in fact, that's what it says in the town code as well, that a waiver can take place on final.
So basically, we could, we either, we kinda need two steps regardless, right? It's gonna be, or did I, it's gonna be preliminary plat and then we can waive the public hearing? Or final plat and we can't waive the public hearing?
Correct.
Okay, so.
And that is supported actually by the town code as well, which says that there can be a waiver of the public hearing when, when, following receipt of the application for approval of the final plat, the board finds the final plat to be in substantial agreement with the preliminary plat. That's when a waiver can happen.
I have a question. I have brought 20 lot line changes to this board and we've never done. And you're saying that what we've been doing is wrong?
Yes.
It's.
I would love to show you.
I believe you are, as I said.
Multiple consultants.
What is the most direct, because I think, I'm, I'll speak for myself, but it sounds like most of us think this is, you know, a good idea, right, a beneficial lot line adjustment. So what is?
How can we expedite this?
Thank you.
Yeah, without causing undue expense and time to the applicant.
How can we expedite this?
I think the way to expedite it would be to set the public hearing for the next meeting.
Great.
Or risk that you're gonna have vacation on this, which you probably won't, so it's a cost and benefit.
You don't think that's a good idea?
What would the applicant like?
I.
He's just shocked.
I'm just shocked that everything we've been doing for, we waited for how long to get that law passed to give this board the power to waive the simple public hearings? And now we're saying that everything we've been doing for the last five years, all the precedents that have been led up to it, we're saying that we've been doing it all.
I've never seen another town in all the municipalities that I work with waive a public hearing on lot line. There's always a public hearing.
What the ZBA does is, they, for the applicant's even the first, for the even first appearance, they schedule a public hearing, so the applicant's first appearance is also a public hearing. So if the concern is expediting these things.
We could always just do that for every lot line.
Right, we didn't know it was just gonna be a lot line till this morning, so we couldn't have gotten a public hearing today.
No, no, and that's our issue, and that's not anybody else's. But I'm just, you know, you could see my reaction, the way we've conducted business here for, ever since it finally got, you know, and we talked about getting that law for 10 years, and they finally did it.
And then we checked the down law.
So then all we need to do really is, is have the final plat and the public hearing all take place next month, and so.
And it should be done. So first, you should make a seeker determination, you should decide this is a type two, which means you don't have to circulate it for lead agency, you can say this is type two, no further environmental reviews to take place. I don't think this needs to go to county because we do that for subdivisions in this town, but not for lot lines in that way.
But it has to go to county because it's in the agricultural district, right?
Yes, it is, it's within 500 feet of a farming operation and an act.
But I believe it has to be both within that distance and a certain type of application, which I don't think includes lot line adjustments.
I don't think, I think that is excluded, yeah, we've had that before.
Can I peek at the law, just, I'm curious, and I'm not gonna be able to get it quickly enough.
Maybe best is to refer it to the county because.
Why not?
Why not? You know, they're probably gonna say it's a matter of local concern or not respond.
Yes, and who's the?
Yeah, we noted that the planning board may refer the application to the county as a quote other authorization, which the referring body may issue under provisions of any zoning or interloated.
Law. Yeah, I think we just refer it to the county, right Lisa?
Say that one more time, sorry.
We're gonna refer this to the county for, because it's within 500 feet of a farming operation act, okay?
Yeah, probably just to add to the act.
Okay.
So you wanna type it?
Yes. So can I get a motion to classify this lot line change as a type two seeker?
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded.
All in favor?
All.
And can you also make that finding on?
I have, yep. And so can I get a motion that the board makes a finding that we don't find this to be impermissible segmentation because we find that separate environmental reviews will not be less protective of the environment?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, yeah, I told Lisa we're gonna refer that to county, and so we are gonna then put it on for a public hearing for next month. That would.
Oh, I'm looking at you, sorry, I'm trying, I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand.
Is there a remedy?
A remedy?
To what, how we've been conducting business here? I mean, in waiving public hearing?
That's why there's a statute of limitations that is quite short for boards making these kinds of determinations, so I suspect the statute is wrong.
Public hearing, the timeline of.
But we've been following the advice of our attorneys.
So all from your firm.
Yeah, all from your firm.
Six days? Six or 16?
So I'm not, I guess I'm not, kinda, and maybe because I'm tired and I don't have my classes. But, no, it's okay. But I guess I'm, I'm not totally getting where we would be violating it. Because I'm just, if such board determines that the preparation of an environmental impact statement is not required, the public hearing on a final plat in substantial agreement with a preliminary plat, or on a final plat when no preliminary plat is required to be submitted, shall be held within, oh, I see what you're saying, shall be.
Shall be.
I see it now, now that I've read it out loud, okay. So basically, it's saying you would. All right. Yeah, it's a little bit, you kinda have to do something. You either have to have an environmental analysis and then I think you can waive it, or you have to do something is what it looks like. I wanna read this more, but.
You'd rather a public hearing than a.
Yeah.
I'm back.
When there's no development, DEC passed a law two years ago, no environmental review for a lot line change. January two years ago, three years ago.
All these laws are not working together.
Listen, it is what it is.
Yeah.
So.
I don't expect that there's gonna be a lot of opposition.
Yeah, I mean, it's just pushing us off for next month.
I think we can put it.
So can I get a motion to set a public hearing for next month?
So moved.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
We'll speak to the top of the agenda.
Yeah.
Yes, gets you right out of here.
I might be back in with the other thing and.
It won't be as big a problem, probably.
Yeah, they're not gonna be back.
So notices have to go out, obviously.
You're still handling all the notices and everything?
No, applicant has the notices. Oh, yeah, we've done one here in a while, yeah.
No.
She gives you the information.
No, boy. Okay.
Things are changing constantly.
Yeah, it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay.
Oh, oh, one other item, sorry. We only took, our new procedure is that we only take a small escrow when an application is made. And we only took a $1,500 escrow, and because there has been back and forth with this, we thought it was a subdivision and then there was issues. Steve Moreno was called in to look at stuff, he hasn't gone out to the site, but he has.
And he shouldn't.
Yeah, he will not now, but, but he has probably spent a little time looking at it and pulling out the maps and that, I don't know, so we do need to get more escrow.
All right, let's go for a second. I will, we can figure that out. I have a question about procedure then. When your firm is reviewing, you're AKRF, right?
Yes.
Aaron says that he passed this on to Steve. You know, it should be going to the wetlands person. Shouldn't that directive be coming from the board and not from the consultant?
If, if he thinks that it will expedite your application, he will sometimes send it to Steve and then we would at this meeting, because it was in my notes to do, was we would say, we're referring this to Steve. Steve wouldn't take, you know, he wouldn't go out to make a site visit, he wouldn't whatever, do those things without hearing from us.
Right.
But sometimes, we're just trying to get your application.
I understand, I understand that point, but I kinda think it's a bad precedent for other consultants to be, if they start working on it without you directing them to do that, I think it should follow those rules, is all I'm saying.
I believe he asked me whether that was something that, do we wanna get Steve involved? And we had a phone conversation, and I think that's how that actually happened. Where sometimes we're just trying to move this to the, whatever is the obvious next thing.
So you're thinking that your client should not pay for Steve Moreno's fees if they. Well, no, not until you engage him yourself as the board.
He doesn't act without.
He doesn't act without, he doesn't, yeah.
Yeah, well, they're not out there calling in experts and telling people to, Steve is our town's resident wetland. I know, I know you, but I'm saying the words out loud, that he is our resident expert. We call him in whenever these issues come, so it's not as if they're out there hiring their own experts to look at things. When a wetland issue is raised, he can be.
Which we will talk during the subdivision, we have zero impact to any of the wetlands, but we'll get to that.
Well, that's great, that's great, that's what we want.
Um, okay. And the only reason I say that, if you look at the fee schedules and how they've changed over the last couple of years, it's a lot of money.
We're looking at that, but we also have looked at other towns' fee schedules.
Yeah, see, I never liked that answer, because, because one town does.
They are very hot.
I understand.
And so people complain about our fees, but then you have to look at what's realistic in today's world and in what other communities are charging their expenses.
I understand, and it's a costly doing business.
You can't just look at it in a vacuum and say, that's a lot of dollars. You have to look at what those dollars are.
When the fees though outweigh what people that are preparing the plans, that's a problem. I'll just leave you with that.
Yeah.
You'll raise your prices.
Because if we're, we're gonna be talking $10,000 for the town by the time this is over.
It's a lot of money.
Which is why maybe two applications in one would have been.
That's right.
But you're walking away before I told you, we do need another $1,500 for this.
Just for the lot line re-lot.
Well, it's not for that, you submitted a subdivision application, which they've spent time on.
You want another 15?
Another $1,500.
You got it, thank you. Thanks for hearing me out.
Thank you.
Next application we have is a, sorry, actually, not application, it's a pre-application, P and L S, from the Carey Institute, hello?
Hello.
So if you can tell us your names and.
Yeah, I'm Fred, yeah, I'm Fred Meyer, the director of the physical plant and grounds. Pretty much oversee everything at the Carey Institute as far as housing and, you know, security and all that.
I'm sorry, just give up a little.
Hello? Yes. Hello?
There we go, that's better.
I'm Fred Meyer, the director of physical plant and grounds for the Carey Institute.
And I'm Joshkins, but I'm part of the Carey Institute.
Okay.
So basically, the pre-application into hopefully talk about the renovation of Gifford House and hopefully turn it into workforce housing and some public space and, you know, some bathroom facilities.
Okay. And you have questions for us, or?
Well, we thought it would be good to come and explain why we're doing this. Gifford House has been marked by this, I would, for almost two decades. It was converted from a residence, we were given it 25, 30 years ago, into laboratories and schools and classrooms and a gift shop, when we ran a gift shop. When it became surplus to use, long before I was president, it was put to mark as, and we've been looking at it for years, trying to figure out what to use this beautiful 1819 mansion for. With the increase in housing prices and rentals, vacancy rate in Dutchess County of 2% or 3% a year, we are finding it increasingly hard to attract, I wouldn't call them shillers, but stock real fellows and people who are coming for two or three years on contract, it does not economically viable for them to buy a place, and it becomes almost impossible for them to rent a place, both for the availability and cost. So our hope is to solve that problem by converting Gifford House into seven apartments, two studios, three bedrooms and two bedrooms, I think that's correct, it's off the top of my head. And those are used for what I would call medium-term employees. The average salary would be one and a half times the median, so it would bring money into the community. We're growing quickly, so we've grown 30% in 25 to 26. We anticipate further growth. What we'll do is, not always respected by everyone, but it is critical to the future of the planet, and we say that with some humility. But it really is much different to have our stock real fellows off in Kansas or Idaho or places they can afford to live telecommuting and not being part of the community. The alternative would be constructing new housing that would be possibly cheaper, right? But it is, in my mind, a shame not to use an existing structure and to show the world that you can take an early 19th century structure and make it energy efficient as well as restoring it to a, closer to its historical roots. So that's why we're doing this. It is probably gonna need a special use permit, and we just wanna make sure before we invested in design and planning and things, that there was not a feeling on the part of the board that this is just something that we could not ever do.
So what category of special use permit do you think it falls on?
Well, it was residential, it then got approved for education, and now it's going back to residential, but it would be a multiple dwelling rather than a single.
Why is it not a boarding house?
It's not a boarding house because each of them have a teaching, living room, it's own bedrooms, and they don't have common space except for the common space relating for educational and needed resources.
The house is a private, that's why it's.
No, we are not gonna make a boarding house, we are not gonna have live parents. We are.
Schools, students.
No, it's gonna be stock real fellows and faculty, staff.
Our code has a special section related to educational institutions as well, and that's something that maybe will issue with the doctors?
Right, so it seems that the special use would need the definition of an educational institution, and educational institutions are allowed to provide faculty housing. So provided this housing would only be for people working for the institution, then it would fit into that, you know, it was open to the broader community, that would be an issue because that would be committed. But as long as it is for faculty only, then it's included with that definition.
Faculty and staff, yeah.
So some institutions are doing this because of the.
It's a huge problem.
It is chronic, right?
You can't track people to the area if you can't house them.
Right.
So with that, they would need, that still requires a special permit, it's just an allowable deal.
Right.
So, okay.
And under that special permit, under the board application, would that be a change? that be a change in use section under it? I was reading through the application.
It's a change in use?
What's its current?
It is though because it is residential.
How is it?
Is it, is it used residential right now?
No.
No.
Right now, it's-
It's a change in use. So it's not a change in use.
How long has it been in Martha?
Uh, two thousand and seven.
Eighteen years.
So it's, no, it's in great condition, so we-
Fred can't say this, but Fred's team does a remarkable job of maintaining our properties. I would say that, uh, when I became president of Carey Institute-
The renovation?
Uh, I didn't think we were gonna have to renovate our headquarters in the timeframe we did because Fred and his team did such a good job of maintenance, but you can't defer capital.
So this is, this is currently maintained?
Yes.
Yes.
Let, let me give you an example. We took off the chimneys a couple of years ago because they were, uh, in danger of falling in and we felt that at some point we're gonna have to rebuild them, but we would rather, uh, remove them before we rebuild them, we're gonna have to do that, but remove them before they destroy the property.
I'm, I'm, I've lived very near there and I've been close to that building, I've walked the trails and I am shocked from your state, it has been used since two thousand and seven. You would never think that.
And we keep it rooted and we've put an extra heating to it, because houses don't like it when we don't take care of them. Uh, but no, I mean, it's, it's in good shape.
And these are the current plans of this?
These are, these are the proposed plans, both tentative. We've been working with Becca and Becca Architects out of, uh, Westport. Bruce Becca, their main partner, did the design of our renovation of, of the, of the headquarters, that now we call it the Tozer Ecosystem Science Building. Um, and so he was the one who did those and we were so happy with his work, um, that we thought we would bring him back for this because it is, in his, his wheelhouse, his two things that he loves to work on is historic renovation and energy efficiency and we're gonna be trying to do that.
I haven't seen these plans, but are you proposing significant alterations to the exterior of the building itself?
No, not at all.
No additions?
Just simply using the-
Using the, right, exactly. Renovate the interior part, you know, probably, you know, the parking lot and, you know-
New windows, but not changing the window shape or, or, or aspect.
Alicia, can you address the SHIPO?
Yeah, so it seems that a consultation has been initiated through, through RIS for CHIPO consultation, um, so-
Do you know what that means?
Please acronym check.
Um, CHIPO is the State Historical Preservation Office and they have an online system-
Yes.
... abbreviated as RIS, Cultural Something, Information System, Cultural Resource. Anyway, um, so applicants who have a property that may, that may potentially be culturally or historically significant usually, you know, would submit, uh, request for consultation to CHIPO to get their, their input, particularly if you're going to renovation.
Yeah.
But somebody's familiar, somebody initiated the consultation, we just wanna know-
So now that you give me the acronym, I can tell you, we did that, why we did that. Uh, my vice president for strategic partnerships, Alicia Lubah, who spent fifteen years working for the National Trust for Historic Preservation, uh, indicated that it would be a good idea to get that consultation because we care about the historic nature of the building. Um, it was built by Jonathan Thorne and it has history to it that we care about and we would like to, uh, consider a historic designation, um, of the property, but we wanna make sure that the plans that Bruce has developed, uh, are not going to, as it were, screw that up before we even start. So we wanted to see, it already has been altered, right? The interior's been altered. The exterior designation, I think is, I must remember, I know there was an extension put on which might cause problems, uh, many years ago, uh, but we wanted to know whether that was, what, what, whether it was possible, which is why we initiated that.
How about whoever that professor is recommending to the board?
Well, certain, yeah.
Especially any written communication?
Anything we get from them and, and then anything we might put in for historic designation either by the state or by the federal government, we'll, we'll let you guys know about as well. Um, but the purpose is, it's more, it is to, primarily, we wanna make sure that we do as good a job of restoration to its historic origins as possible. Uh, again, there has been a real change in the way that, um, designation has changed with energy efficiency and the, the changing times, but we also, there, it opens up both costs and benefits for grants that we can get for the renovation, uh, but those grants greatly limit what we can do, um, in terms of restoration and, and changing, uh, anything on the interior. So that, we're really trying, as we are here, to get as good a sense of what is possible and what potential challenges we might face, uh, because we wanna move forward on this. Uh, to say we desperately need the housing is possibly an understatement. Um, I really like that we are able to house some of our stock real fellows and, and bring them to, to Millbrook, so, um, that's why we're doing this now.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, lack of housing is a chronic problem for businesses here. They can't grow because they don't, they can't, workers can't afford to live here, there's no mass transportation, so I think the board very much appreciates the concept and the idea and to, to couple that with adaptive reuse is, um, in my mind, you know, a terrific thing.
We're trying.
Especially as you said, it probably looks expensive just to build it.
I could, I could come up to you, I mean, we have two thousand acres, it would not be a problem to come to you and say, "I wanna put up ten, you know, twelve hundred square foot houses for our stocks" and my guess is it would cost less.
And I was a PhD student at Bard and at the graduate center in the city and Bard owns Bard Hall on Fifty-Seventh Street specifically for this reason, because otherwise-
Nobody could-
Faculty and students couldn't afford to, to live. So it's, it's, it's a common problem.
And look, it's a net, it's a net sum, right? We will build the housing for our folks and that will mean our folks aren't competing with others in the community, so it's a net benefit to the community indirectly.
Do we need more professional side of the area?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, you said you wrote, you wrote thirty, you wrote thirty percent? How many, what is that, how do you measure it?
Fifteen million dollar operating budget last year, we closed the books, that's all done. We have a proposed budget approved by the trustees of twen- just over twenty million dollars this year. It's being driven by two main factors, one of which is increased grants. Uh, I am very glad to say that seven years ago, we started what I call a pick to private, so we're getting more foundation money, more money from private individuals, less money from the federal government. We are expecting even less money next year from the federal government, but we are working very hard to engage foundations both here and abroad, and, and California and other states, uh, to fund our work, which is increasingly international in its scope, uh, and so that's helping and we have a remarkable community here and in the city who are being very supportive in difficult times, so I am oddly optimistic. Pitch me.
I know, if you do.
So.
Well done.
Hannah, what does this say?
Yeah, so my question is, this was already educational, acquired two thousand and seven, and that was a special use at that time, so did you have acquired special use permit for that use?
Prudits me, so I can't answer.
Because my question is, with like the B and Bs, there's an expiration of the special use, that they have to come back and get a new approval, and I'm wondering here if this use is gonna be the same and, and residential or faculty being a part of the institutional use, does, is there a special permit already granted for this?
Um, probably worth going through the files and seeing what's there, uh, and let us know, please.
I could see in the code, the educational institution section is so tiny in the code, it's just one little definition and so I'll do some research too and see if there's an expiration on that, but we'd love to know if there's a-
If that's the case, you would just need a building permit.
Right.
That would be nice.
So then would it just be a building permit if there's no, if there's no special use permit needed?
Well, that would be, I-
And there's no major, you know, exterior alterations?
Actually, if it's all interior renovation-
The special use.
Renewing or attending?
Well, or if we have to apply for a new one, we'll do that. All right. This is, this is without a doubt the best five hundred dollars we've spent because I know you complain about the cost of doing things, but I am grateful that you have a reasonable fee structure for, uh, getting feedback and-
The only person that has ever said that.
Do we have an award for it?
My mother took me to say thank you. Um, may she rest in peace.
I think we should agree that a site visit would be required.
Okay. Um, yeah, don't, don't be too scared when you go inside, it's dusty and there's a lot of stuff in there, but, um, it's, if you can summon your imagination, it's got great bones.
I don't know, we must say, but it'd be fine.
You're always welcome.
Sometimes the good part is that we decided how this would fit into our special use permit and it would be under the education institution and then secondly, you may not even need anything from us and at the most, you would need just an extension of the use, special use permit, potentially.
Potentially.
We'll see, yeah, we'll see what happens with that.
Just, just one question and I don't mean to drag this on, but you said, uh, in addition to residential use for, for faculty and staff, bathroom facilities, is that for the public?
Yes, and so what we're hoping to do is the back room at Gifford House, if you've ever been there, is a deeply elegant room, it's got this incredible fireplace that, uh, was, uh, the, um, the, the mantle is an old bedstead from, I think seventeenth century England, uh, that the owners put in at some point. It's a wonderful room and we would love a place other than, uh, the Carriage House, which is more or less unheated and we use it in the summer for our camp, but isn't a great place to talk to people about our trails, have meetings, uh, and there are no really good public facilities when people are on the trails, so the idea would be to make those available, um, to the public, uh, when we're doing events or people are on the trails.
That's, it would still fall under the educational?
It would still be inherently educational, all right? Um, there's very little we do that isn't, uh, we don't have a lot of, you know, unrelated business income, which I think is fortunate most of the time.
Very good.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, good luck.
It's exciting.
It is exciting.
Say that?
I mean, that's, I mean, that's exactly what we need.
I would like to go see this.
Okay, um, next on the agenda, I just wanted to go, we had a notice of intent to establish lead agency that we received from Town Stanford, for Velazquez subdivision, which everyone received. Um, the only reason we got that is in Kansas County, Washington. I looked through it, I didn't see any reason to object to their lead agency, they've been cut over in the Town Stanford, they're developing eighty acres into four twenty-something acre lots, around that, um, great? Can I get a motion of term that we don't object to their lead agency and that I can sign?
Sure, move. Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, next, we had our application fees, subdivision, so do, Adam and Eric, we're going to be looking at the fee escrow theory, so escrow fee.
Structure.
That, that we give out to.
So we looked at that and, uh, I sent around an email this morning with a draft.
Now you're just trying to, you have to talk in the mic. We can't hear anything, listen back to make sure that the minutes are being done and people need to also hear you when they go and watch it.
Listen to the recording.
I apologize. Uh, yeah, so just to repeat, I, I, we have been working on this and I sent around a draft this morning of a document that I prepared, um, is simply a working document, I would love feedback from any of you about the, the suitability of the document, the, any potential improvements. Uh, the idea was to take the form that we have on the website, which is essentially a, it looks like an Excel sheet, uh, more for internal use because there are columns for notes, uh, payments, dates, et cetera, which is not necessarily ideal for a public-facing document, shall we say. So the villages document, which we had looked at together, uh, was a model and it's simply a one-page sheet broken into, uh, sections, major subdivisions, minor subdivisions, lot line adjustments and then-
Very easy to read.
Yeah, so you know, you can scan it as a member of the public and get the idea. So, uh, I don't know if anyone's had a chance to take a look at that, that file, uh, but-
I, I looked at it. I, I guess, um, I just kind of quickly looked at it, but, um, it looked to me, just at a glance, that the, the numbers seemed to be in line with the village.
The numbers were unchanged from, I took the numbers from our existing document because we'd agreed that they were-
For now.
In line, yeah, for now.
Do you think that the fees for the, uh, subdivision are adequate?
Can't hear you. You gotta, you gotta shout to the mic.
Shout to the mic, we can't really hear you.
Do you think that the fees for the major subdivision are adequate? They seem kinda light to me because there's an awful lot involved with a major subdivision. You know, we're gonna be, every major subdivision, we're gonna be talking about it for months.
Application fee is eight fifty.
Let me, let me open the document.
It's two fifty, but like if there's multiple lots.
So again, when I did this, I simply took the, the information from the previous document. I do have questions about-
I'm not questioning your, your interpretation.
No, I understand.
I'm thinking, I'm addressing the board here.
But I do have, uh, questions about, for instance, major subdivision, can you go down? So there's the applic-, uh, okay, major subdivision, application fee eight fifty, fee per new lot, two fifty, final approval fee eight fifty, final approval fee per lot, what's the difference? And recreation fee per new lot?
You can have a fee per lot.
Recreation or recreation?
I think it's-
What does that mean?
Recreation. I'm assuming it's recreation, although I don't know what it means.
I didn't either, I mean, I-
I don't know what that's about, but that's, that's a town thing.
But it's four thousand per new lot.
I think that's a village item.
No, that's our-
Well, that was on our, our-
No, that's our-
I've put, the bottom of the PDF is our.
But the use per new lot, uh, when you're making an application, you have to do a fee for each lot.
Yes.
But then, you may never get approval for your subdivision. You may go halfway through your, your thing and you would not go, you would not submit a final plaid, you would not, that happens.
Right.
So in that case, that's all you would have paid. Let's say you had ten lots and two fifty each, you'd do that, but you then have to pay again if you have a final approval. And that's because more work has happened on it, I assume.
That makes sense, but from, uh, simply writing this document, maybe there are ways that we can adjust the wording to make that clear, because as it is, it's extremely confusing. I was confused.
And we, these, I agree with you, but we are not the creators of the fees, so I think the, the town board creates the fees and we have to apply them, or we have to go to them and change the fees, but I don't know who, these are so old and these docu- these wording has just been going down, it, like, I don't know exactly what was meant ten years ago when somebody on the town board just-
And the recreation or recreation fee is four thousand dollars.
What does that mean? What's that mean? What is it?
It's, it's associated with subdivisions, the idea being that if you're adding people, that it's gonna place a greater demand on the existing recreational facilities or parks and all those, so, you know, sometimes, uh, if there's somebody's adding a park, then-
So if we, if-
It's a situation that, um, we have them, but that's the idea, that they're-
Okay.
People are gonna be using-
So like the town pool and town parks are now gonna be used by X amount more people because they have all these new lots.
I, I thought maybe it had to do with those portions of the code in subdivisions where you have, you're creating like a recreational area, I think that's in like Cluster or, again, I don't think it relates to that.
No, because it applies to all subdivision things.
I've seen how it was described, which is that either a board can say, we would like you to put in a park here, you're gonna have so many new kids in this area, we would like you to put in a park and have some additional facility, or, if you can't do that, then we'll have you instead pay for recreation.
But the recreation fee for a minor and a major subdivision is the same, $4,000. So, if you have a minor subdivision, that's not, that's conceivably not having a major impact on the number of users.
But it's per lot, so it does, it's exactly the same. No, but on a minor subdivision, if you create two new lots, you're creating maybe two new families that will be using the park, so you get $4,000 per family. The same exact thing happens on a major subdivision. You have 20 new lots, you're going to pay.
You're paying $4,000 times 20.
20, because you have 20 new families.
I see.
It's exactly the same.
Have we ever charged that?
We don't deal with the fees, they do. I mean, I'm wondering, has that ever? I'm sure it has, I'm sure.
I mean, you talked about wanting to lower costs.
I think these are the.
That's one that I question myself.
Both. This is a document that sets out escrow and then. And we've never discussed it. Fees.
Because we haven't discussed any of these fees. These fees are handled by, have always been handled by the town board and secretary.
But they're not, they don't say it either. So, who's deciding whether or not that $4,000 gets assessed to the applicant? Who's deciding that?
And sets the fee schedule, but this board can set escrow.
Escrow. But, it's a good question. Who's deciding that?
Who makes the final bill? Like, and decides whether or not that line item gets added to the bill?
Our secretary, right? Like, you would now, you would have to pay that recreation fee.
I know, nobody's ever given me that.
But since you've been here, have we approved a subdivision?
Clear.
Yes. But not with that.
Clear.
Clear.
And, and they were not asked to pay that.
That would be $20,000.
And this would be a board finding.
Well, they only, they only had, oh yeah, they had four new.
Town board plan?
They had three new lots.
So, in terms of, the town board would set a fee schedule.
It's a person making the bill.
We have to go to the board to make a finding of, either we're doing the recreation of some park or whatever, and then decide if there's an addition, or set and apply this recreation fee.
So, all this, though, is coming down to our board secretary putting a bill together, and she's not had any training on this, no discussion has been had by the board, and no one else in the town board is checking this, and seeing if the bill is correct. We never see the bill to know if it's correct. I mean.
I think we should just.
To be honest, I get very bothered by this, because we're getting, we're getting all of this criticism, that our bills are too high, and that we're charging people too much money, and we shouldn't use experts, and we this, and we, all of these things, when there's money being left on the table that people are supposed to pay, and there's nobody in this office whose job it is to know that they're supposed to pay that.
I don't, I don't think we should charge that fee. I think that's.
Well, it's not up to you. You're the town board! The town board has voted that fee in.
Wait, wait, wait. One, one, hey. I said I was gonna bring a gavel. I wish I had. One at a ti, one at a time, just because everybody's saying really, oh, look at that! No, just because these are really good points, and it would be good to hear, to hear them. But I, I agree, and I wonder if this is something that needs to be discussed, you know, maybe in a different context with the board and. This is a town, this is a town board thing.
Right here.
Because it's also the process of, like, who ma, who creates the bills to make sure that the right fees are assessed by the right number of lots.
I send out, like, right now, I've been, since July, I've been going back to escrow tracking that has been dealing with for years.
Right.
It is being successful with the emails that I am sending out.
I think we're fine.
This portion of that one item has never been brought to me before, and this is the first time. The next time this comes to my attention, now obviously, I have to send, I have to let them know that they need to submit that amount to.
But are you doing the math in, like, the billing part, where it says, we created four new lots, and it's $200 per lot when it closes, then it's another $400 per new lot when this happens, and like, this whole schedule here?
This was the first one that the.
But this has been in place forever.
But this is the first since I've been here.
Yeah.
The Coleman and Whalen is the first one.
Can I, do you, is it maybe something to look at in the code, is, what, where's the enforcement mechanism for fees? Was that loud? Like, is there something, like, about enforcing fees?
This is where, I think, all the confusion is, is where.
This is the town process.
Why, why, and I brought this up months ago, when Susan and I talked about this, who is in charge of all of this? Who does the billing? Who's making sure that all the bills are being paid?
I think it's the town board.
And all Lois says is, you give her the money.
This is wild, this is.
And we, and the other thing is, we have had secretary after secretary after secretary in a part-time position, and we're, all of the funds that come through these zoning board, planning board, are going through this part-time position with such turnover.
You've had no training on this.
It's not the way it should operate. It's just not the way it should operate.
I would say that the department or board that sets the fees should be tasked with, I think, you know, ensuring that the fees are complied with, you know, because I, I think that that's.
Don't the resolutions usually say that?
They say comply, that we, that all fees and escrow are paid for the consultants. But if nobody tells them, you owe us X, it goes for years, they haven't.
You have to draft a bill, that's correct. And she said, no discussion or training or anything on this, and I'm sure none of the previous.
I think this is part of the, so it would be worse, now, let's just think about this.
Lisa is at least, she is the planning board, billing board secretary, she understands the grasp of what we're doing. If all, who is gonna give, bookkeeper, you're gonna do what? Somebody's gonna have to make a detailed bill, because she's not involved in this process at all.
Right. Apparently, that's our, the board secretary's been, supposed to be doing that.
So, if she's doing that, shouldn't she also be keeping track of who pays?
All of that, but we're saying, if she's not being trained on it, and.
She's not even told about this.
Not even told that this is necessary.
So, whose responsibility is it to train the planning board secretary? Planning board?
I would think that's the town clerk's responsibility.
That's the town clerk, that's their.
The town clerk is not responsible for any other employees, other than ones that are associated with tax collection and the works.
So, who's responsible for the?
Who hires?
So, nobody is Lisa's supervisor? Nobody?
Well, we're a volunteer board, we're not employees of, we're not employees of the town. I don't think that we can actually, I don't think we actually can.
Who is the hiring?
Because we're not elected.
Well, the hiring was.
Chrissy helped, Chrissy was very, but Chrissy was very involved in that hiring, I would say she was the number one person involved in that.
I mean, her, so, I would assume that this position is, is in the budget, and is approved every year. Right, this is a budget, a budgeted position.
Administrative duties.
And I'm not sure that this planning board meeting is the, is the place to have this conversation. But I, I think that probably we need to distill down.
That's why we're pointing.
And understand who's responsible for what, and if.
I always find a good way to find out the best practices is to look at what other communities are doing. What you're saying is true, is that, that secretaries work only for the boards, and they do not work under a town clerk, well, then that's gonna be the case in other communities. So, how do they teach and supervise and, and do all of this?
So, technically, the supervisor, the town supervisor would be responsible, am I correct?
So, it's.
He writes, signs the checks.
Yeah, this is.
So, Gary's gotta come in and check over.
Yeah, but ultimately, who is responsible for the all billing and reconciling all billing?
Right, if the town clerk.
But this is just one thing that the town is, we're not sending those out.
The bookkeeper is responsible for reconciling all accounts.
Right.
Not the town clerk.
Right, yes.
It's responsible.
Right, so, right.
I think that we, someone's got it, I think, well, maybe the board, this is a discussion that maybe this has to be altered.
Maybe we should have Chrissy, or, you know, the town clerk, come to one of these meetings, and we could discuss it with them.
I think this is probably, no, I actually, I don't think this is planning board agenda at all. I think so, what, I think maybe we can, Doug liaises with you, and, and take it up, probably to Gary, because the planning board, as far as I understand it, has, has no kind of oversight of, of a salaried town employee, because we're just a bunch of volunteers. None of us are elected.
Yet, I'm being told that I'm the supervisor, so that, like, it just, the whole.
I think we'll figure it out.
The town supervisor would be the only, as a town board member, I am not the supervisor.
So, and since I've been on this board, I think you're the fourth planning board secretary that we've had, the fourth. I have no idea how you get hired, how you apply, we don't have anything to do with.
I mean, I've been involved. I have definitely been involved in interviews and all of that, and so, they've tried to include me and the ZBA chair, you know, to, to keep us in the loop on that. But, and it's not, none of this is to say, I want to be somebody's supervisor, or that Lisa's doing anything wrong, I'm just saying that this is how things fall through the cracks, is because we don't have something like that.
But, so.
So, anyway, this all started because of the discussion about our fee document.
And I think we should go back, and go back to that discussion.
The design of the document, obviously, you've done a spectacular.
It's so easy to read, and it's creating all this good discussion, because it's so easy to read.
I do love it for that, but I couldn't make, my one concern criticism is that, three, four years ago, we tried to make all of the forms look alike.
Yeah, exactly.
And, so if we change the form, and I'm only talking about the header, I'm not talking about the rest of the form, but, in general, so that the header, when people pulled up a document from the town, this was something I worked on with Mary Alex and then.
I agree, totally. I just took it off the web, as a working.
Exactly. And so, I think, whatever documents we create, they should have a similar header on the top, so that people think, oh, this is town of Washington.
Yeah, standardised header, yeah.
I actually love the blue that you use. Yours, I thought, is much more eye-catching and all that.
Yeah, I agree, let's make it uniform.
But, but it should be used like that.
I had just a couple small comments. One is, and I'm not sure if I'm correct, for escrow deposit, where we say, additional escrow will be established at the first planning board meeting, should that be may, or?
That language was on the previous document.
So, do, right, so I guess what I'm asking is, do we want it to be may or will? In other words, are we, like, is it, are we definitely going to addition?
In some cases, we won't. A simple lot line change.
I think may. I think it should be may then, right? Because it's very simple, we're not going to ask for more.
Maybe, so, we can waive the escrow.
Right, so I think it should be additional escrow may be established, just because.
I almost wanna say will likely be established, but that's probably not what you put in the form, but.
May is.
May is good. I think may. And then, and then this pre-application meeting fee.
Is it a shall at the planning board's discretion?
Shall at the discretion?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that might work. That might be better, actually. Because may, I just feel like they're gonna say, may feels very conditional.
I think shall at the discretion.
I would just start with, I guess, at, at the discretion of, I'll, I'll give you language. It's fine, but yeah, that's, that concept, that concept is better. And then, for the pre-application meeting fee, it says optional at applicant's request, and I think that's not about the fee, but rather about the applicant.
Definitely not about the fee.
So, I think that we just, I think we can just take the whole optional at the applicant's request out, because.
And it was also on the previous, I think I short, condensed it, but it was also on the previous.
I would get rid of it, because it makes it sound like the fee is optional, and my guess is, if given the option, nobody's going to pay the fee.
Fee's not optional.
Just delete that.
Delete the whole italics, and, you know, I think, when it comes to pre-application, Lisa, as the gatekeeper, is gonna say, you can have a pre-application meeting if you're not sure, and the fee is $500.
Yeah, that makes sense. The one thing that I did change was the order in which these categories appear, because if you look at the original document, the pre-application marketing fee comes at the very top, and then, I think, if I remember, remember correctly, the minor, minor, major adjustments, then site plan, special use, wetlands, and then lot line at the bottom, it was all over the place. So, I tried to, at least, condense it, and to make it, to present it in an order that was more clearly comprehensible.
It's much better. Yeah, looks much better.
Yeah, I liked it.
Yeah, I think, I think we all like it.
Okay, good. So, I'll revise and send around, and I'll copy that as well, or is this just for the?
Doesn't matter. And the planning board secretary.
Yeah, and the planning board secretary.
Because she has to use this document, too.
Yeah, if you have changes to it, to Lisa.
But, so, just one more, one more question. As I understand it now, the board is responsible for setting the fees themselves.
The town board.
Escrow fees.
The planning board only.
The town board is required, excuse me, responsible for setting the, the fees and the amounts of those fees. Right? For example, the minor subdivision, you set these five categories, and you choose the amounts that correspond to those categories. It's our responsibility to set the escrow, starting escrow amount, and then require additional escrow payments.
Depending on the complexity of the.
Depending on the case.
Yeah. Yeah, because the escrow's about supporting, you know, the consultants, you support the work of the board versus fees, which are just town fees.
Exactly. So, if, if we come back to the idea that, and as you've discussed, wanting to lower some of these costs, that isn't really our, we don't have the ability to.
We don't have the ability to do that.
No, and the escrow is just based on our work. It's based on the work that needs to be done. Yeah.
So, we don't have that much discretion in this. If we want to change the fees, we're really, the town board has to.
Really, I would love recommendations. Do you think they all should be lowered?
Recreation.
I don't, I don't know what that money gets used for, I have no idea. I, in fact, thought that that got used to pay some of the consultants, remember what happened with the?
Yeah.
We, I went to the town board a number of years ago to, to ask for a fee, to them, add a fee for the pre-application meeting request, so that we could pay the little bit of money that, for the consultants. And it turns out that that money, every time we've used a pre-application meeting, we run a deficit, because the $500 that we collect doesn't go into the kitty to pay them. So, it look.
Where does it go?
Who knows? It gets, it's a fee. Only escrow money goes to pay them. So, what I, I thought, the money obviously all goes into the same kitty in the end, but it is showing, each time we use a pre-application meeting, it's showing that we have a deficit in the escrow, that somebody hasn't paid a bill. And so, you know, it always looks like we're losing money every time.
So, escrow needs to be paid for everything.
And who sets the pre-application fee? Is that also the town board?
I went to the town board, and I made a request.
Oh, so, see, it shouldn't even be a fee.
It was silly, it should have been an escrow. But, I didn't know that.
So, every, every single person that comes to in front of this board, pre-application or whatever, needs escrow.
Escrow.
And that escrow amount is 1,500.
And that's for the consultant. So, instead, it's going to revenue for the town.
Exactly.
So, if the Carr Institute came to us, and was required to pay the 500 for the pre-application meeting fee, they would have to deposit 1,500 in escrow.
No, there's no escrow.
From which that 500 would be deducted.
Currently, we take no escrow on a pre-application.
But I think we're saying we should.
We should, exactly. But I think that most of those pre-applications, very little time is spent, we actually spoke about it, Aaron and Hannah's predecessor, about how much money we should ask for, I think, and we said, well, $500, because they're not gonna spend that much time.
For preapplications.
And we, I thought that that amount that I was asking the town board to approve would cover whatever little bit of, of time they spent on it. But then, again, it turned out the money was not being shown as paying that. So, we really need an escrow.
And so, this is in our, this is in our, on our wheelhouse then to.
But then, you're charging somebody who comes for a pre-application to ask us a few questions.
$1,000.
$1,000.
$50 fee to, $500 fee to the town, and $500 escrow.
That seems too much. I think we need to eliminate the fee.
It's going to deficit everything.
I was in my head that I remembered, a gentleman that came from Greenbrier. I always think in my head that I remembered a gentleman that came for Greenbrier.
Yeah.
AKRS comments for that pre-application meeting, that was $500 for their comment. With no escrow money, that means that the pre-application meeting money, AKRS, is what I have to pay somewhere.
So maybe we set a second, a separate, like, $1,500 for everything except for the preapplication workshop or preapplication meeting, and we set that escrow at $500.
Yeah, and I don't think we have the discretion to do that.
We do. We can do that on our own.
So I think that needs to be added.
So to add, escrow deposit, parentheses, due for all applications, 1,500.
No.
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 Escrow deposit...
Of for applications. Yes, 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 yes.
Pre-application is not an application.
$500.
So add underneath that, escrow deposit for preapplications.
Meetings, yeah.
$500.
$500, yes.
And then I think we...
Because then it won't always be an adjustment.
And then, and then Doug, what if... Are we okay, though, then, with charging $1,000 to Joe Schmo who has a very small thing? I feel that's excessive.
I would be, personally, I would rather see no $100 application fee for a pre-application and $500 so that it covers...
I think that's what we need. But in order to get that done, we need you guys to adjust that fee to 100.
For pre-application.
And we, for pre-application, and we can make a vote right now on creating an escrow for a pre-application of $500. What do you think?
I like it.
I like it.
Before we do this, send me a final draft with all recommendations for all new fees.
Okay.
And then I will... It's crazy, but...
But Doug, maybe, I think, in terms of, I don't, I don't know that we were going to be able to make any recommendations about the fee portion of this because we don't really know what the genesis is and how important it is to the bottom line of the town, right? If, I'm making this up, let's just say that the fees were originally designed to cover the secretary's salary.
And the likes, and, you know, for the meeting.
So, I guess we would just want to make sure that we're not, you know, and again, I don't, it doesn't sound like anybody's particularly counting for this anyhow, but...
I don't think we can really make that many recommendations about the fees.
We're just making the one on the pre-application. That's all we can say for sure.
Is that the only kind of application or pre-application that doesn't currently have any escrow?
Yes.
Yes. Because you don't pay the escrow until you make an actual application at this point.
And there have been fees, both the water and AKRS, beyond the pre-application, where we have no escrow to be able to pay for those invoices.
And again, that was all a misunderstanding.
Yeah, we thought the fees were going towards that, yeah.
I only found that out about a month ago.
I need to ask this question because, say, we all agree that people coming in for a simple pre-application asks a question, a $100 fee or a $500, whatever we're deciding for the, for the escrow is fine. But what about people like, that came in here today and say they came with a plan and want to talk about the plan, right? And we had consultants talk about it. That wouldn't be covered by $500. That would be a lot more.
It kind of is. Because they're not going, when they come in and they're, they're just here for a preapplication, we're not going through the whole...
They don't have a plan to even do it.
Doing a general question and answer session. So they can get some things hammered out before they send us their application in a month or so.
Right.
It's not meant for either Hannah or Alicia or Aaron to, they can get...
But they're in the meeting right now.
And they're not just in the meeting, they see the preapplication before.
Right.
And so, but they're not spending hours on this. And I say to them not to spend hours on it. Just have a look over it, we'll answer some general questions, we're not, we keep those numbers down as best we can.
But we can ask them for additional escrow fees based on that need.
Absolutely, can ask for.
Is there a threshold at which you require a replenishment currently on this schedule?
Yes.
A certain percentage for greater than a preapplication?
Yes.
But not on a preapp...
She did that non-pre, not with the now.
We had, I was like, for a church, a school or church, I think, that came, this person came for a workshop with us, like, four or five months in a row, workshop with us. Do you remember?
But that's not a preapplication.
It was actually an application.
That's an application.
Okay, okay, but on the, on the agenda as a workshop.
But the thing was, they were not, what was happening for ages was that they were on regular applications, the escrow would get eaten up completely. And then it was just, okay, and then we're running a deficit. And we're just, and that's been happening for so long.
So that's on us. That's on the planning board to make sure that we're tracking that and that we are then submitting a second or third or fourth bill when they depleted the escrow and we need to replenish it.
But see, I don't know that that, I am not the bills keeper.
No, we're responsible for the escrow, making sure that we're asking for a certain amount of escrow based on what we deem as the complexity of the project. And we're the only ones that know that. The town won't know that. We know that.
We can set the escrow, but the following up as to whether or not they've submitted their checks and they're doing it like that, that's...
That's an administrative function.
It's an administrative...
But I feel like you have some responsibility in this, though, as far as deciding how much escrow to collect. Because that's what that first opening line says, at the shall at the discretion of the planning board. Because we're the ones that know how much is going to be required and asked of our attorney and our professional consultants in these cases. Like, the clear was, that went deep. And other projects may not go as deep. And we're the only ones that know the complexity and how much escrow to ask for.
And that's why we should be doing that. We should be being conscious of it. And when it does get eaten up, even if we establish a larger one, it gets eaten up, our secretary needs to let us know, well, you know what?
So we need to be touching base regularly with you on what's been collected, how many bills have gone out, how much escrow is left.
If it dips below that, whatever that replenishment level is, the board should continue reviewing the application.
Right.
Because if they dip past that escrow and they're not refilling and they're not coming back up and making those payments, then...
It's taken off the agenda.
Doug, who's, who sets the fees for any town board items? Who deals with the fees for, I don't know, things that come before the town board or for building permits?
The town's most of their own fees.
What about building permit? Do they set their own fees?
No, everything, all fees have to be set by the town board.
But who on the town board is responsible for that?
It should be, it's probably Gary, he's the supervisor.
Doug, was there fees for that marathon?
I just applied for the department and the amount, it was expensive. The amount was based on a percentage of the estimated cost of...
Yeah, sorry. My question was, as an example, the Millbrook Marathon, is that through the direct, I think that was directed to the board. So is that an...
So, from memory, I believe that the rec department set that and then it just came before the board.
Okay.
I believe that we had a discussion about...
Because then there was a discussion about changing it.
Not entirely sure there was a charge for them.
Okay.
Now we don't think about it longer. Longer they got their charge of the town.
Yeah, I thought the discussion was that there would be, they ate up the glass.
They had to pay for that. That was local insurance. Probably have to do a little more digging as far as the application fees. I will say that at a quick glance for me, they don't cover the cost of any of the business. We're not going to take a lot of application fees or even secretary or anything like that. I think for more people that get involved in this and we start handing, okay, you guys set this, and then she gives it to Lisa, and then if Lisa gives it to the bookkeeper to do the billing, I think there gets to be too many hands involved and there are too many opportunities for mistakes. I think they've tried that in the past and it didn't work. And I think that's why now Lois, even with the last secretary, Lois made the agreement that the planning board, planning board would do the home billing for all their applications. Am I close?
You're very close.
So the, the secretary is going to do that?
It's yet another reason why the secretarial position is not a part-time position.
No.
You have an argument for me.
So you for years.
And we need to do proper training.
Yeah.
Yeah, because there's parts of the application that I need more information on, to be able to judge, okay, that one fee, $4,000, I...
Yeah.
I assume, and that makes me laugh, I assume that the planning board and the planning board, they have the training to the planning board secretary and how they want stuff like that.
We don't know anything about the billing.
Okay.
The first I heard of billing was this year, and I've been on the board for seven plus years.
If the fees we collect could be earmarked for the compensation of a full-time secretary, then that may, for the ZBA and for us, that may make more sense.
Planning board fees is a line item in the budget, I'm looking at it. I don't exactly know what that means, but, but this is definitely, and it's not because I want less work, but it's definitely... That's okay, I just, the, there's a line, there's a, there's a line made in, in the budget for planning board fees.
How much is that?
$30,000. So, and I don't know what that means.
Is that...
I don't know if that's meant to cover fees, you know, incurred...
On the internal side?
It's, yeah, it means revenue, so it should be, it's, it's under revenue, actually, I think, revenue account.
Where those fees come from.
Yeah, so it's $30,000.
And I'm guessing that that's just an average of the last couple of years.
I'm guessing too, but I guess the point being, I'm not sure, I know what our remit is, like, under town law or, like, under the, you know, code. And it definitely doesn't include kind of administration of fees. And I think that this is not necessarily something for the planning board to decide here. I think this is a town-level administrative decision.
For how all the fees for all the boards are going to be billed and set and tracked.
It's a much broader philosophical question in any way. What is the point of charging fees for our services? It's, I think, well, the cost of providing the service, which is administrative.
Right, and where does it overlap the taxes? And people come here, they're paying these fees, they're paying their consultants, they're paying our consultants. It's really, really, we didn't create all the regulations, it caused all of this, we don't have to operate in the real world, but I mean, it's just so onerous.
And it's not good so far down the revenue, that we're not talking about having escrow accounts to cover.
Oh, I'm not suggesting...
We did the deep dive on escrow. And it turns out that we're not overcharging for escrow at all, that we're, we basically were doing fine. I think it looked like things were proportional to, to the needs and adjusted and collected and managed. And I think that part we've got down. The part where it gets fuzzy, and I don't actually think it's fuzzy, but the part we're talking about are fees. But that's outside of the planning board's remit completely. We're volunteers.
Yeah, we're getting big raises.
And that is the same with supervising the bookkeeping. I just think that is so far beyond what the planning board is supposed to be doing, that I won't, you know, somebody's proved to me that that is something that we should be doing. That is a, a town function.
It's a major function.
And they, and they should be monitoring that? They should be doing a much better job.
It's an employee of the town.
All right. We have covered this.
Anyway.
My best for as long as I can to make sure that that does not slip through the cracks again.
I think it's just a conversation.
I mean, this isn't, this is personal.
I did, and it was erroneous, not my fault.
No, it wasn't. No, it wasn't. This all gets fixed now.
Well, that's the way everything is, if we don't talk about it, we don't fix it.
Exactly.
Right. And we made a lot of assumptions too, that weren't, were not correct.
With the escrow money that we found, the conversation is okay.
Money, we're getting more money in.
I've brought in over $10,000 of delinquent escrow fees since July 11th.
That's great. That's a lot of money.
Yeah, and it starts with simplifying our documents so we all can see what we're looking at and talking about.
Okay, so let's, first of all, I just want to get a motion to establish a $500 escrow for the applications.
So moved.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
And can I get a motion to close the meeting?
Can I?
Oh, this class, come on.
I apologize. I know this is going on forever. Cicianna brought it up in her conversation with, excuse me, the Wayland Coleman. There's a part of our code that has been kind of ignored, and it's 165-141, where, paraphrasing, it's whatever law is the most restrictive, that is what you go by. So that's why she brought that up.
Yeah.
So the state law was more restrictive than our code, so then that is why she, you know, made the motion that this is why you should be doing your procedure this way. It also, it also affects 165-84G, which is something that strangely enough, the CAC brings up, which used to be 391, 371, whatever, with a 25% maximum increase on the pre-existing non-conforming. Again, whichever is more restrictive. If our code is more restrictive, it's 25%. If it's the state or some other regulation, that is it. So the ZBA and the planning board, up late, have been doing that incorrectly. So this is something that no one...
Because the state is more restrictive than that?
If the state is more restrictive, then we go by that. Our code is more...
But you're saying in that instance, the state is more restrictive.
Anything on our code?
No. Wetlands, wetlands were more restrictive.
That's more restrictive.
Yeah, but that's what I'm just trying to clarify, that on that 25% issue, the state is more restrictive.
Town.
Ours is more restrictive. The code is more restrictive.
Oh, our code is more restrictive.
If, in, and the Coleman...
Ours is almost always more restrictive.
The state was more restrictive. There may be something, the wetlands is more restrictive. So the one thing that we don't do as a part of our code is abide by 165-141. So that's something everyone needs to look at and keep an eye on with every application. Whoever, whatever part is the most restrictive, that's what we need to be standing by.
Yeah, and I think, I think we have been, because I, I remember, I just can think of like instances where we've talked about things being more restrictive and we've gone with it.
Okay.
And maybe that it, maybe that...
I do remember the, the CAC bringing this issue up on some occasion.
And everyone wants to ignore us because we're the CAC, which I love that, that's great. The ZBA just passed a 174% increase for a variance. And then it came to you and you agreed with it. So nobody took into consideration our code in that, in that clause. So this is why, it was nice that Hannah brought it up because no, but you didn't know, understand why she brought it up. But it is a part of our code.
The 25% non-conforming.
Yeah.
So what is, what is the...
It's no increase of anything larger from that date, from May 1974.
Our code says that.
Anything beyond 25% is a variance. So what, what is it that you're saying is more restrictive?
Our code is more restrictive.
I actually said you can't go more than 25%.
So you're saying that there is no option for variance.
That is what our code says.
You're saying our code doesn't allow to give a variance greater than 25%?
That is how it has always been, that is what our code says.
And they gave one for 174%.
144...
Which, which application was that?
The Pastor Thomas.
Pastor Hannah.
I mean, and again, I think some of us have to go, and it's, it's an important discussion, but I also think that, you know, when you're talking about interpretation of code, right? There's all different layers. And so, and so if, if the code provides that the ZBA has the ability to issue a variance and our job is just to accept or reject it, we're not an enforce, you know, we don't have an enforcement mechanism.
No, no.
And we have discretion. And so I think, you know, I just, I want to be clear, we've not ignored any laws, we've got consultants and counsel and...
I agree with you on that. But I'm saying, I mean, Hannah has just confirmed that there is something that is more restrictive. And that's why she, she pointed it out. She did her due diligence on that and you were all like, well, we've been doing it this way. If we keep saying, well, this is the way we've been doing it, let's just be doing it that way. That's not what our code says.
I'm forgetting what's saying there. That was an observation. No one is saying that we're doing this, it's just, it was an observation.
We were all kind of shocked.
You're really overstating this. I think it's not fair.
I also, I also, I'm sorry, I also just...
I'm not trying to say anyone's doing anything wrong, I'm just saying you need to look at this and read it, if you would, and everyone be on the same page going forward. It's, it's just something that just happened to come up in something in this, and we have mentioned it in the past, and it just, if somebody, you know, we can just look at it.
Have you brought this to the ZBA, particularly the non-performing kind of...
I gotta go.
Yes.
I think this is, I think this is an agenda...
This is an important issue. Now that you have raised this issue, it will be in people's minds.
And that's all I was saying, just to have it there so that you guys have it in the future. I don't want you to disrespect anybody in what you do because I know you're a volunteer as much as I am.
Thank you. Okay, can I get a motion to close the meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Second.
Susan, thank you so much. Good job.
Thank you all.
Interesting meeting.